Welcome. Today is Thursday, January 12th, 2017 of the Arlington School Committee. I'm going to open my meeting and talk about some of the art that we have in the room. Over here, I believe these are all bracket. We have kindergarten, fabulous feasts. Many artists use food as subject matter for their work, and food is often present at celebrations of all kinds. Kindergarten students spent the last few months focusing on many aspects of celebration, masks, costumes, party drawings, and now feast collages. Students were instructed to create a feast by cutting out appropriate shapes and colors to represent the various foods, imagining the colored paper background as their tabletop. And then there were small details added with paint. Over here is the Goitaku Fish Printing, old and new, grade two. Students in the second grade took their previous printmaking experience from earlier grades to new levels with introduction of this lesson.
Fish.
Fish. Goitaku, and I know I'm butchering this pronunciation. Printing was traditionally practiced in Japan several centuries ago as a way for Japanese fishermen to record particularly memorable catches before it influenced artists and developed into an art form. Students were told that they'd be combining traditional and new techniques of the printing in an artwork of their own. Thin papers placed on the rubber fish and gently rubbed to create a print, then students were ready to try the technique on their own. Once completed, the second step was to create a background on which to mount their fish print. Students were given a variety of materials, including watercolor and collage, and encouraged to combine the materials and utilize previously learned techniques such as watercolor, resist, and wet-on-wet painting to create interesting and vibrant effects to highlight their fish print. So, okay, that's cool. Grade one, using line constructively, tree line drawings. And that is here, right? Excellent. For their first lesson of the year, first graders revisited the element of line and discussed how lines can be found everywhere in our world and that artists can use different kinds of lines to express their ideas more fully. Students examined and discussed several examples of drawings by various artists, explaining how each artist used line. Next, students were shown several paintings. They were led to notice how particular types of line changes, the way we expect a tree to look. Finally, students were instructed to create a line drawing of their own choice. That said, everything in the picture had to be constructed from a variety of appropriate lines, and the subject had to include at least one tree. So, everything is done using lines, whatever, and yeah, so that's cool. And they're encouraged to think about how lines can be used to represent the many parts of a tree and different species of tree. Grade four, and I think that's this one, unity and transformation in sculpture. Fourth, and which we have pictures of the sculptures. Fourth graders were introduced to the design element of unity, in which an artist employs something which visually holds the artwork together. Students also discussed how an artist can utilize the idea or process of transformation in a work of art. Students were then shown several examples of artwork by Tara Donovan, an artist who uses common disposable materials such as paper plates and styrofoam cups, and transforms their appearance by arranging large amounts of the same material in unexpected ways. Sculptures of this nature often tend to be abstract and organic in styling content. Students were encouraged to explore this idea while also creating a stable, secure structure with balance and support. That looks pretty cool. Architectural facades is something that's partially hidden. Is that back there?
On the right-hand side.
On the right-hand side.
To the right of the fish.
Oh, they're both in the same place. Okay, got it. Right of the fish. Students in grade three have been learning about architecture and how architects plan buildings. For this lesson, students learn that the front exterior wall of a building is called a facade, and responds specific elements to be considered. Students notice that architects, like all artists, often borrow design ideas from existing buildings and adopt them to their own ideas. Students were instructed to create a styrofoam block print of a building facade of their own design while paying special attention to the details and various structural elements such as arches, columns, balconies, and towers. Once the prints were dry and complete, students created a background setting for their building using a variety of media. And that one, then, is grade five, designing better products. Students in grade five were introduced to industrial design and discussed several examples of the kinds of factory-made consumer products industrial designers help conceptualize and construct. Students were led through the multi-step process in which an idea must be carried before a product can be sold in stores to potential customers. They were assigned into design teams consisting of groups of four to five students. Each team was given a design assignment in which to either improve an existing product or invent a new product for potential purchase. After preliminary ideas were dried out, conceptual sketches, when drawn on graph paper, and students were required to show a minimum of two views of their product, including front view. Labeling of product features, characteristics, and special selling points were also required. Okay, it's always great to see what the students are up to. I think you want to go back to school, to grade school. So, next thing on the list is community participation. Do we have? No one's on the list? Okay. Okay. So, next on the list is community education, summer fund approval, trip approval. And I think Mr. Zurich can come speak to us.
And our Director of Community Education, Jen Rothenberg.
And Jen Rothenberg, yes.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Jen Rothenberg, the Director of Arlington Community Education. This is Tom Zurich, the seventh-grade English teacher at Odysseum Middle School. As most of you know, Arlington Community Ed offers seven weeks of programming during the summer. We offer half-day, full-day, and field trips, as well as our ever-popular insider's guide to Odysseum. About five or six years ago, Tom started our Adventure Day Trippers program, where he led middle schoolers on trips to different places for a week. Each day, they would go on a different trip. For one full week. They would surf, they would do sea kayaking, they'd explore the dunes up on the North Shore, and they'd hike Mount Monamot. The kids loved these experiences and gained so much from them. We're here tonight seeking approval for a new program. Tom has stepped it up a notch, and he's approached us with the idea to run an 11-day camping trip in Maine. The trip includes both a separate canoe and kayak excursions, as well as hiking in Acadia. Tom has a great deal of experience leading these kinds of trips, and we're very excited to have the opportunity to offer one like this to students in Arlington. As you'll see in your packets, we've done a great deal of research, and we have a lot of information for parents. We feel the trip is well-planned and are confident that it's going to run smoothly. So, now I'll turn it over to Tom, and he can walk you through the 11 days, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
So, I started thinking about this last summer. I did not do the adventure or the Day Trippers program. I was a little tired after doing five or six years of them. But in the middle of July, when I would have been doing it, I was kind of bored. So, I started thinking about what I could replace it with, and I'd thought about doing a trip like this a number of years ago. So, I started thinking about it over the summer, made some initial inquiries, went onto websites, found out some of the better canoe guides, kayaking guides in Maine, and then went to Jen, I think early September, with the idea of doing this trip. And did the number of days really around a three-day, two-night sea kayak trip, three-day, two-night wilderness canoe trip, and then a three-night camping excursion in Acadia in between the two. And that's, it fell out to 11 days. Traveling by van, pulling a trailer with all our gear in it, and then, again, using licensed, experienced guides, this is not something that I would take on myself. Just logistically, it's very difficult to do on your own. Even though I'm comfortable with leading kids in kayaks and canoes, I wouldn't try a trip like this on myself. So, that's how it got to this point. Jen was mildly enthusiastic and mildly skeptical. I was with it.
I should have gone that way.
Questions and comments? Mr. Hayner.
How many students will this be involving?
Ten. Ten students and a co-leader, who is currently a freshman in college, who's a graduate of Arlington High School, Kate Brennan.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Carden.
I just want to make sure we cleared this with the town council before proceeding with it.
Yes, I have been in touch with town council. They've provided me with liability waivers. I will have them review all of the other waivers that we have, because there are the separate waivers for the two different excursions. So, we will have them review those as well.
And I initially set the number at 10, because it's a manageable-sized group. I have done two camping trips to Vermont, overnight camping trips, as part of the summer fund program, and both of those I did take 12. So, 10 seemed like a good place to start. It's possible we could take up to 12, but that would be the absolute maximum.
Dr. Allison Ampe.
I'm wondering what the student-adult ratio will be with the guides on the canoe.
I believe there's two guides per trip for the kayak and the canoe, so it would be four adults along with the 10 or 12 students.
That's it?
That was my question.
Yes, Mr. Sutman.
So, we're hard on the Canadian border. The Saint Croix River is the border there. Do we have any issues of passports or crossing the border?
I don't think we actually cross the border.
Okay. Because I saw that the international coordinator signed the application. The international trip coordinator signed the.
Okay.
Yeah, Mary Valano, yeah.
Yeah. We'll be careful not to stray into Canadian waters as we're.
I wouldn't want to see if we have students stuck on the wrong side of the border and can't get back.
I did, at Kathy's request, I did go sit with Mary Valano to review the trip and to make sure that we had dotted all our i's and crossed our t's, and that we had all the proper paperwork. She has supplied us with a lot of great samples for lists that we can give to parents, behavior guidelines, medical information sheets. So, that's where some of this information came from.
Mr. Hayner.
On the trips and stuff, do you have provisioning food and stuff like that at different times?
The canoe trip is fully provisioned. That's the nice thing about paying guides to do that, is they, all the food, dry bags, the boats, the guides, that's all covered with that. The other, we'll camp about five nights on our own, and we'll provision ourselves with that. But those are split up into one night, one night before the canoe trip. We'll drive up to Maine. It's about a seven-hour drive. So, we'll drive that. We'll spend the night in a campground close to the canoe put-in. We'll be in Acadia for three nights, and then we'll drive down to Bristol and camp there, so we're close to the kayak put-in. And at the end of the kayak trip, we'll do another single-night camp, and so that will feed ourselves.
The camping isn't in the bush itself?
This is good car camping.
Yes, Dr. Allison Ampe.
One more. Are you expecting the kids to be experienced, or are these trips within beginner range?
No, the canoe and the kayak trip both start with instruction on kayaking and canoeing. So, it doesn't really require any past experience with that. It requires a sense of adventure, a willingness to be uncomfortable at times, to get wet and cold and hungry. But as far as the experience that they need, no, they don't.
So, I did a two-week backcountry canoe trip around this age, and it was just a fantastic experience. I mean, it was incredibly difficult, but it was really altering. But I do have, I just have one question. Are students expected to provide any more gear than the, you know, shoes and basic clothing? Is there anything else that they would need to purchase? Sleeping bags?
No, they'll need sleeping bags, they'll need a good day pack. We won't be actually backpacking, we'll just be day hiking.
Okay.
So, they don't need a real backpack.
Right, just basics.
And for both of those trips, they use dry bags, and the best way to pack dry bags is to put your gear into soft, really garbage bags, because then you can stuff the dry bags full. Trying to get a backpack into a dry bag doesn't work well.
Okay, great, thanks.
A sleeping bag would probably be the biggest.
Sleeping bag and boots type of thing.
Thing if they don't have a good sleeping bag.
Okay, great, thanks. And I really, I appreciate that you have an option for somebody with limited means to potentially get a break. So, I think that's, to be encouraged, that's nice to see.
Good. And we would hope that if there were a problem finding gear, I know the high school program does own some of their own sleeping bags, so that might be a way that we can help as well if students aren't able to get bags for themselves.
Great, thanks.
Just one quick thing. It brings back my Boy Scout experience and stuff like that. Some of these kids might be able to, boys and girls Scouts might be able to get some credit on merit badges.
I'm sure they could, if they hadn't, yeah, if they hadn't thought of that.
Great, thank you very much. So, we need to vote, actually, don't we? Yes, I have a motion on the floor.
So, move to approve the.
Summer fund trip.
Summer fund trip.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hayner, seconded by Dr. Allison Ampe. All those in favor? Aye. Aye? Any opposition? It's unanimous. Great.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask you to come back and maybe a little slideshow?
Oh, some pictures, that'd be great.
Yeah, we'll definitely take some pictures.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. That'd be great.
Bill, you want to go on the first, don't you?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have an adult trip.
We'll only pass it next time if one of us can go.
Yeah, we'll do an adult one next year.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Catherine Ritz, who is our Director of World Languages, is here this evening to do a presentation, just as an overview of the department, the offerings, and she'll be here to answer any questions that you might have. This is something we've been doing over the last few years, is having curriculum leaders come in and have a chance for them, for you, to hear about the program and to be able to ask questions. So, Catherine, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm very excited to talk about my department. I'm very proud of all the work that we've been doing, and I hope that the town of Arlington is proud of this program as well, because I think it's rather phenomenal, if I do say so myself. So, I will get right started. So, I wanted to just start with a little bit of a peek into what our classrooms look like, because certainly from when I studied language, things have really changed. So, an important philosophy, if you come visit our classrooms, is the concept that we are using what we call the target language to instruct our students. So, if you come in, we follow the national standards. Ninety percent plus of the teacher, of the instructional time is in the language. That's a pretty big change, with sort of an immersive-style philosophy. And so, that's something we've been really working on over the years, to ensure that all the teachers have the strategies they need to enable that to be successful, so that students can understand, so they're not overwhelmed, or are able to follow along and understand what the teacher is saying. And then, in the past two years or so, we've also been trying to implement the 90 percent plus standard also applies to students, so really establishing an expectation that in this classroom, when you come in, you're speaking the language. And that begins at level one pretty early on. We establish a rule with our students, and it's incredibly transformative. So, we're really beginning this in the middle school level. All of the teachers are on board that this is an expectation, that you speak the language in the class, and students actually ask permission to use English. But the, as I'll show you some of the testing results, the proficiency level of the students really skyrocket. This is just a really, really powerful instructional method. We try to focus on student-centered classrooms. Our goal is communication in the language. It's not about grammatical forms or accuracy. Certainly, that's a component of communication, but really the focus is on communicating, using real-world, purposeful context for language use. So, this is just a couple photos I pulled just to show you some of the activities. We actually brought in a guidance counselor. Students prepared a flyer for potential Spanish-speaking students who might come to Arlington and wanted to learn about, you know, the community, and the guidance counselors came in and kind of rated which one they thought would be the most helpful. We also, whoops, use an activity called speed dating, which you can see on the left, is really popular. You can know what speed dating is, so imagine ding-ding, move to the next partner, you're talking on a specific topic. It's really fun, very interactive. It's very popular. We've also been doing, trying to integrate more and more Skype connections. So, you're all familiar, of course, with the Arlington Teosinte Group. Elizabeth Ray is actually coming in next week again to speak with our AP Spanish course, and she's helped us set up Skype sessions with students from Teosinte. And our AP Spanish students have been able to speak with them, ask questions, and we've been trying to do that as well. We had a teacher last year who did a Skype connection with Columbia, so we've been trying to expand this as much as possible, so really bringing the real world into our classrooms. And then, we have a really fun assessment, if you can believe this is an assessment. It's a gladiator game in the eighth grade. It's a cumulative, summative assessment. So, we really want it to be fun and interactive and purposeful. So, it's just a peek inside our classrooms. Some of the important initiatives that we've been working on, the first, this is a really multi-year process, is a thematic-based curriculum revision. So, we've been, for the past, I would say, two years, have been working on developing our own thematic curricula. So, this year, all of our level-one teachers, and this includes all of the middle school is considered kind of a level-one, including our level-one high school teachers, are implementing new thematic-based curricula. So, these are common units across languages. They're what we call language agnostic, so it really doesn't matter the language, it's this kind of unit, and then the cultural components are adapted to the specific language. So, we really focused on can-do performance targets. So, for example, we have a home and family unit. So, what if I grew up in another country is our essential question, and the performance target, I can have a conversation about our home and family. So, we're really trying to emphasize the conversational skills in our classes. An important component of these thematic curricula are using what we refer to as authentic materials. So, in foreign language, that means it's made by a native speaker for a native speaker, so it's not this adapted, simplified, teacher-made text. So, just to show you some examples of what these look like, so we're using Pinterest to collect all of these. So, you can see, these are authentic resources. The one on the left is from Mexico, kind of, we have a nutrition, healthy eating unit. So, they're looking at authentic documents from Mexico, and then Mi Plato is from the United States, but in Spanish. And you can see how even a beginning-level student can approach this because of the imagery and the structure of it, and can make sense of it. So, we're really trying to bring these in, and these are important for many reasons, but not the least of which is it's building kind of problem-solving and critical-thinking skills. When you look at this and you maybe understand, you know, 80%, so here's another one, a school schedule. You have to use a lot of deciphering skills to try to figure out the rest of it, and that's something that we're trying to teach in our units. We're really phasing out the use of textbooks in the modern language program. So, as we're implementing the thematic-based curriculum, the textbook's still used as a support, but it's really no longer the driving force of the curriculum, which is an important shift. So, this year, we have two teachers that are piloting a level-two and three curriculum, and we're also having a group revising and trying to finalize that, and then we're hoping next year we can roll out for all of our level-two teachers a common level-two and three, sort of intermediate-level curriculum.
Can you just explain level-one, two, and three?
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry, sure, sorry. So, the middle school program is sixth, seventh, and eighth, at the end of which most students enter into level-two course. So, if you think a level-one is really, they're attaining a novice high level of speaking proficiency, and then in the level-two, we're looking at a low-intermediate. Level-three, we're hitting a mid, intermediate-mid. The intermediate takes a long time to kind of progress through that as a language speaker, and we offer up through level-five is the highest level, which would either a five-A, curriculum-A, five honors, or an AP. So, in a high school, if a student followed the full sequence, they would go up through level-five at the high school. Sorry. Another part of the thematic-based units is what are called integrated performance assessments, IPAs. So, these are replacing the traditional chapter tests that you may yourself have experienced in your language program. So, they provide students with real-world contextualized scenarios for when they might actually be using the language, and have them do a little bit of research, do some speaking with a partner, and come up with sort of a final presentation of some kind. So, there's three modes that they kind of go through. I won't go into those in detail, but they're sort of circling around a specific topic. So, I won't read this over for you, but just in a nutshell, so we've come up with a scenario. This is in our food and nutrition unit, where we're imagining that there's a group of exchange students coming to Arlington from a specific country, and you want to help them find healthy eating choices in the school cafeteria. So, you need to first understand how, what is healthy eating in their home country? So, what is that considered? You know, that's an important first step. And then, what types of food would students from that country actually like? And then, you're comparing it to your own culture and saying, okay, well, what's offered there? What's offered here? What might these students enjoy when they come to the cafeteria and also be able to eat healthfully and so on? So, you can see we're bringing in those authentic resources, the sort of nutritional guides from various countries, they're having conversations with their partners, and then they're coming up with a final flyer presentation of some sort, in which they make some recommendations for these hypothetical exchange students. So, just to give you an idea of what that curriculum looks like. So, something along with the revised curriculum that we've been working on is proficiency testing. So, we were fortunate to get a grant from AEF a few years ago, and were able to do a sample testing of the proficiency levels of students, of a sample of students, kind of get a sense, you know, are we hitting the targets that we're coming up with? Are our common assessments in line with what we're hoping our students are achieving? Getting a little bit of external data. And then, very fortunate that the district picked up the cost for the past few years, and we'll also be testing a group this year. So, we use different assessments for the different languages. So, stamp for our Italian, it's called the Standards-Based Assessment of Proficiency. So, students are assessed in their speaking and their listening skills. Apple is the Actual Assessment of Performance towards proficiency, so we use that in French, Mandarin, and Spanish, and it's really nice. It's got like an interactive, kind of a Skype video-type thing, where they're asked questions, they have to respond spontaneously. It's a really nice performance assessment. And then, the Alira is the Actual Latin Interpretive Reading Assessment. So, we were able to test just over 300 students last year. We're hoping to test the same amount, possibly, if possible, the same exact students, so we can really see, are they making progress? And we also want to make sure that the results we got last year are valid, that they're not, weren't just a one-off year. So, we've set the proficiency target. So, as I was mentioning to your question before about the levels, so you can see, we've got what we call our pathway to proficiency. So, in the elementary, the middle school, we're really trying to hit a high novice speaker, and then in level-two, which would, if they followed the full sequence, would be a freshman. We're getting intermediate-low, and then we kind of, it takes a long time for students to build through the intermediate levels, up through hopefully advanced-low is really the highest we're shooting for. And Mandarin takes a little bit longer, not surprisingly, for students to get a higher level of proficiency. So, what you can see here, this is the data from last year, what's in the box. Oh, darn it, I thought that was going to do that. Sorry, this seems to, I just wanted to do the.
Aaron, keep turning out the presentation. Sorry about that.
It's okay. So, what you can see in the box here, that's the proficiency target that we're shooting for, and you can see what's shaded is where the percentage of students that we're hitting in those various groups. So, we're very encouraged. You can see the French, where you see the target, we do have, in most cases, the majority of students are meeting or above the proficiency target that we've set, so we found that was really encouraging. So, a similar scenario, not everybody, but you can kind of see, again, that black box is where the proficiency target was, and then the blue is where the students, you can kind of see a progression up as the students go up over the years.
Is the proficiency verbal?
Sorry, this is oral proficiency.
Oral proficiency.
Correct, yeah. The assessments do test in what you traditionally are the four skills, the reading, writing, speaking, and listening. We've been focusing on speaking, primarily because it's, well, first, I think it's the most important reason that you want to learn a language, but also that, you know, historically and traditionally, teachers tend to favor written, and I really wanted to put an emphasis on speaking. So, these are for speaking. Thank you for asking.
So, how would it work? How would an oral proficiency test work?
So, it's, so as I just mentioned, it's, they have a, they go into the language lab, they have the headsets, the microphone, and it gives them a series of prompts. It looks like a Skype conversation.
Okay, yeah.
So, you have, the person asks them, they start something simple, like, oh, hi, my name is so-and-so, what's your name? And then, it's a simulated conversation, so then the head kind of nods and waits for you to respond, and you provide your answer, and it records it, and then it's assessed.
And it's scored by?
It's not scored live, it's scored by an actual person. So, it takes a couple of weeks for us to get the results.
Okay.
So, it's not a multiple-choice assessment, it's a performance assessment.
And it's scored by a person, all right?
It's scored by a person.
I'm sorry you interrupted.
That's okay, please do. This is all, like, obvious to me, so I appreciate the question.
Yeah.
So, as you can see, we're really happy, we're hitting, for the most part, at or above the target in our Spanish. Come on, clicker. they have the headsets, the microphone, and it gives them a series of prompts, it looks like a Skype conversation.
Okay, yeah.
So you have, the person asks them, they start something simple, like, oh hi, my name is so-and-so, what's your name? And then it's a simulated conversation, so then the head kind of nods and waits for you to respond, and you provide your answer, and it records it, and then it's assessed.
And it's scored by?
It's not scored live, it's scored by an actual person. So it takes a couple of weeks for us to get the results.
Okay.
So it's not a multiple-choice assessment, it's a, it's a performance assessment.
And it's scored by a person?
It's scored by a person.
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay, please do. This is all like obvious to me, so I appreciate the question.
Yeah.
So as you can see, we're, we're really happy, we're hitting, for the most part, at or above the target in our Spanish. Come on, clicker.
Can you just hit the down?
Yeah, do you mind? I don't know why this is not, I was working a second ago. You just click to the next one.
Oh yeah, it might be the battery.
Arrow down.
Just the down.
The down arrow.
Not responding to you either.
You know, I heard that this was, oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay. So, are you going to sit there for me, Robert? In Mandarin, we were so excited, the middle school, this is actually rather outstanding. Our middle school, 7th grade, we had students that were testing novice-high and intermediate, and then even in 8th grade, we had students that were testing in the intermediate in the oral proficiency, so we're really excited about those results. We did see some regression in the high school, so that's an area of improvement, so we want to, again, we want to test again this year and make sure that's a valid result, but we are kind of watching that. Latin, our students, this actually, they flew well beyond and above our proficiency targets, and to the point that we were like, you know, we think our kids are strong, but this is maybe a bit too high, so we're kind of trying to get some, some national data and sort of get, find out if this test is really testing what we think it is, but in any case, we were, you know, delighted with these results. Italian, so it tested in the speaking and listening separately, so this one actually, because of the structure of the test, it tests both the listening and the speaking. So we found that our students were exceeding the targets for listening, but struggled a little bit with the speaking, so again, questioning whether that's an area we want to work on improving. I just wanted to also take a minute to highlight some of the enrollment news, I guess, in the department. The most significant piece of news regarding enrollment in the World Language Program is our French enrollment. So we have seen a doubling of enrollment in the French program, beginning in the middle school, and the students have hit the high school this year. So just to sort of give you a sense of what that means, if you go back to 2012, in our 8th-grade French program, we had 37 students, the following year, 52, 44 the next year, and then in 2015-16, we have 88 students. And then 82, and this year, we've got in the high 80s as well, I think our 6th grade, maybe at 91 at this point. So that's a doubling of enrollment, and I will gently just acknowledge that we haven't added any French staff, so we've been a little bit squeezed with that. And the kids have now hit the high school and the program, they're, you know, is, it's great news, but, you know, we are a little bit tight. And you'll just, as a point of comparison, the 8th grade Spanish, you can see at the bottom, that same year when we had 37 French students, we had 133 Spanish students. Fast forward to this year, we only have 143. So while we've got 10 more Spanish kids, we've got more than double the same amount in French. So it's just sort of interesting that more students are choosing French than they had previously. The Mandarin program, so we've, we're able to get Mandarin to the middle school a few years ago. Mandarin's been a little bit slower to pick up an enrollment. We're excited this year that our 7th grade, so last year we had 21 students in the 7th grade Mandarin, and this year we have 61, so we're really encouraged about that. It's just been a slower language to pick up in kind of popularity throughout the district, but it's finally starting to kind of, to take off. And the Italian program, we started, we launched it back in 2013, and we've been able to grow, and that's been thanks to a grant from COSIT, and have been able to grow from a Level 1 through 4, so we now have a four-year Italian program. And just this past week, we were in discussion with the Italian consulate, who is giving us a grant for an after-school AP Italian course, so our Italian teacher will be offering, I think we've got eight students, that will be doing after-school studying for the AP Italian, so that's entirely grant-funded from the Italian consulate, so we're really excited about that.
So actually, can you just go over for the audience, which languages are offered at the middle school level, which languages are offered at the high school level, and are any of them sort of threatened because a grant is about to go away, or are they all sort of, are we committed to all of them?
Yeah, so at the middle school, we currently have French, Spanish, Latin, and Mandarin. So as I just mentioned, Mandarin's been in the middle school just for a couple of years, so I've been growing that. The high school, we have those four languages, and we also have Italian, and that was thanks to a grant from this organization called COSIT. The grant from COSIT only covers a small portion, so it covers about, I think, two-thirds of one class for one of our teachers, and the district is covering the rest. As far as we know, it's a yearly grant, renewable grant. We don't know from year to year how much we're going to get, they've assured me we're going to get the grant again next year, they're very happy that we're going to be offering the after-school Italian for AP, which is something they're really trying to encourage. So I guess I feel some confidence that that will continue, but those are the only grants that we have that are supporting the staff.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. You'll also see, I just pulled these figures, the overall enrollment in the program as a whole has increased, so if you just go back to 2011-12, at the high school, 73% of students were taking a language, and we've now grown to 84%, so we've seen, we think, more students sticking with their language over the years, which we're very excited about. Another component of our program, to your question about what's offered, we also have an elective online language offering, these are through Brigham and Young University, they have online high school credit courses, and we offer students American Sign Language, Arabic, Japanese, Korean, German, and Russian. And this year, we have 18 students that are taking one of those languages. So those are an elective, in addition, it gives them a nice exposure to the language, but some of the students taking them are just incredibly passionate about those languages, so we're excited to be able to make that offer, thanks to technology. Go ahead. So, a couple sort of things that have been going on beyond the program, one of which I spoke about last year at the school committee, is the SEAL of Bili literacy, which is an award that recognizes students' proficiency levels in English and one other language. So we piloted that last year. We were very excited to have, so last spring, we had 51 students that we assessed, and 41 of them qualified for the SEAL of Bili literacy, so this follows state guidelines. So the State Language Association, working with an English Language Learner/Teacher Association, has established guidelines that we're following. So we have a lot of students that are testing, there's three levels, platinum, gold, and silver, so our students, you know, we had 19 that made the advanced-low, which is the highest level of the SEAL. And then we did test again this spring, I'm sorry, this fall, and we'll test again in the spring, so we had 15 students that assessed this spring, this fall, sorry, 14 of whom qualified for the SEAL. So we've tested in languages, French, Latin, Italian, German, Portuguese, Spanish, and this year, we had three students that submitted portfolios for Japanese, Polish, and Western Armenian, so we're really excited. The students, those students obviously are not studying the foreign language program, this is a home language that they have demonstrated proficiency for, and this is actually going to go on their transcript, and gives them a chance to show the colleges that they've got this skill that they're bringing with them, that would, they'd never be able to show them otherwise. Just go ahead. These are just three of our award winners from last year, these were our three seniors, the rest of the students were juniors last year. And I will just take the opportunity to invite you, on April 27th, we're going to be having a big award ceremony for all of these students and a few others, so I will give you a formal invitation later, but please mark your calendars. Another program that we launched last year is the Global Competence Program. This is a program that exists in a number of neighboring districts, and it's really an interdisciplinary certificate program for students. We had five of our current seniors successfully completed the program in September. They have a number of requirements, academic component, community service, travel, and then they have to complete what's called a global engagement project. So as you can see from these titles, we had students who studied the evolving gender roles in Peru, who studied Korea, that's actually one of the students who's taking the online Korean, investigated the two Koreas, a student who wanted to study Nazi Germany and Italy's government, and so on. Just go ahead. So you can see the evolving gender roles, she did a really nice video presentation, and then another student made a collage about the two Koreas. I'll briefly highlight some of the travel, we're trying to expand and give our students the opportunities to experience the language in the culture where it's spoken. She could click, Rob. This year, we are running the France Exchange as well, I know you're all familiar with that, that's been a longstanding program that we've been running, the students came to visit us in October from France, and we are going in April to stay with them. We are launching this year, in April as well, a new trip for our middle schoolers to Montreal, so they'll get to speak some French up there. We are expecting a visit from students in Beijing, I think many of you may have hosted some of these teachers, I know someone did a dinner at some point, one of the School Cadimi members, for our students from Beijing, but this is from the same school in Beijing that we've been working with for a few years, so they'll be here in January. Next year, we're planning again Quebec Homestay, I think this will be the fourth year we would be running it. And then we have some new, exciting exchanges under works that we haven't yet presented to you guys for approval, but will be soon. One is an exchange with a school in Barcelona that we're working on for next year. And one is an exchange with a school in Florence in Italy for our Italian exchange students. And then we have some initial planning for a trip for our Latin students to Rome, so that's also coming down the pike. I also just want to make sure the School Cadimi is aware that we offer National World Language Honors Societies in all five of the languages that we offer at the high school. We just launched the Italian Honor Society last year, so those are among the students that we recognized at the award ceremony in April, so we have had, I think upwards of 50 students every year that qualify for the Honor Society. And then we also have a number of extracurricular clubs, activities, and other awards, one of which is the Kurtamen Competitions, that our Latin students have been participating in very, very actively, they're meeting almost weekly to prepare for these, and are going all over the place to compete. We have a number of language clubs, we've been raising funds for the Arlington Teosinte Group through selling handmade pulseras from local artisans from El Salvador, both in the middle school and the high school. We have got a French club, a Spanish club, very active. You may be familiar with the Café Parisien, the junior-year French project that Veronique Leahy launched a number of years ago, which is still ongoing. If you're not familiar with it, you can think of the show Shark Tank, where you have to come up with a business proposal to open up a restaurant in Paris, and then defend your proposal, so it's very exciting. And we also have been offering annually the national language contests in French, Spanish, and Latin, and we always have had national-level winners at the highest level, so we're really excited about that as well. I hope you are aware, but last year, we were awarded the Exemplary French Program with Honors from the American Association of Teachers of France, we had to put together our very rigorous portfolio, and were the first school in Massachusetts to be awarded this award. So very excited about that. And we've had also a number of, I won't read them over, but a number of French students that were, received various awards in oral competitions, summer travel scholarships at last spring, that I just wanted to bring to your attention. And finally, I just really want to highlight the teachers in the department and how active they have been, not only within their classroom and providing really high-quality teaching for the students, but also sharing their knowledge with the larger foreign language community. So we have teachers that are presenting nationally, Abby Holt in the middle school, Anne Zachary, Nalu Hogan, who you can see on the right, as well as myself, presented at the ACTFLE, which is the national, because over 9,000 people attend, made presentations there at this foreign language teacher conference, we're presenting regionally. I went with a group of two teachers to MasQ, the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference, to present on ways that we're integrating Skype and other technologies. Last year, I was invited to speak at the DESI Fall Convening about the assessments that we've been using as models for other districts. And Veronique Leahy has brought, as you see on the top-right photo, a group of students to present at the Regis College Project-Based Learning Conference, which she's been sharing on that Café Parisien project as well. So I think we've got a really active and dedicated group of teachers, and I hope Arlington feels proud of this program as strongly as I do. So I will open up for questions, thank you.
Great. Mr. Sleifman.
Well, it's obvious that you have a lot of pride in your department and the work that's going on, and that every year, you seem to be raising the bar and improving our World Language Program in the district, and I think that the data you're presenting and the narrative you have is quite commendable.
Thank you.
Go back a slide.
Oh, sorry.
Who was the, who was the casualty in the?
Yeah.
You know, you don't put a slide up of a, somebody lying on the floor, looking quite dead without a tribute.
So that is actually our phenomenal middle school Latin teacher, Abby Holt, who presented at this ACTFLE, the national conference, which is very selective to be accepted to present there. And I'm not sure exactly what she's doing, I'm fairly certain she's casting a spell in Latin and has done something.
That language or something. The one thing that fascinated me was that you talked about the conversion of the classrooms to an immersion model, so that once you walk in the door, you need to speak that language. And I'm thinking of those first-year kids in September who are walking and knowing nothing of the language. How long does it take before you're able to at least get the basic classroom commands and phraseology so that you can run a class for a day without reverting to English? And how difficult is that?
I hope I won't shock you, it's day one, Level 1, so the first day is entirely in the language. We do this by a lot of body language, so you can imagine all the classroom commands, raise your hand, sit down, take out a piece of paper, that you can show the students while you're telling them. There's a strategy called TPR, Total Physical Response, where you give a prompt, a command, and the student doesn't need to speak, they just need to show physically that they understand what you're telling them to do, it's extremely effective, particularly at the beginning, where you're doing this type of thing. But it's actually amazing, so yes, students, it can be a little scary that first day when you walk in and the teacher's speaking only Spanish. And they truly, I think, are amazed themselves at how quickly they can understand and follow along what's going on in the classroom. It takes strategies, the pictures, the visuals, the body language cognate, certainly in French and Spanish, are hugely helpful, you know, the word for question in French is "question", so you write that on the board, and, oh, you know, you don't need to translate it, you've shown them pretty quickly what it means. So there's a lot of strategies, and it takes training, so that's why I said when, you know, I started here, I would say we were around 50/50, so some teachers were using the target language, some teachers, you know, needed some support, and so that's something that we've really worked on ensuring the strategies there first, and then it's really amazing how effective it is. And then establishing, you know, week 2, week 3, a no-English rule in the classroom. It's such, it's, again, it takes strategies, and it takes training and practice, but it's incredibly effective, and I do think the teachers at this point are able to do that in an effective way, where students feel supported.
Excellent.
It's exciting, and I would love for any of you, if you'd like to come in, the middle school Mandarin classroom is rather outstanding, to come and see what's going on in there, and you're like, oh my god, I'm in Beijing, and the kids are all speaking Mandarin, so it really works.
Dr. Rudson, I met with, what was the name of that gentleman who designed the language programs in Utah?
We had a visitor from, Greg Duncan, who came last year.
And one of the things that I learned in that meeting with him is that this is best practice, that the old way of translating, teacher translating what they're being said is, first of all, it's created a generation of people who don't speak. So I want to applaud the whole department, and Catherine in particular, for her leadership in this, because it really has been quite transformative in terms of the performance of our students. And ultimately, I agree that what is the goal, is to be able to communicate, and if they can go and talk in a language, how wonderful is that?
Absolutely. Dr. Allison Epi.
I had a couple of questions. First, this is really wonderful. So I'm wondering, you said that you're trying to phase out textbooks, and I'm wondering what will kids have as reference material when they're trying to do stuff at home?
Yeah, so we've truthfully been developing a lot of the resources, so the kids are getting, so we're using the, the shift has been, the textbook dictates the curriculum, and we go through the chapters, to, we've come up with our units, and maybe we're pulling a piece here, a piece there from the textbook. There are so many online resources available today, I know a lot of teachers, I'm thinking of one who's put together a YouTube page where she's found presentations that- she's found presentations that help explain the different concepts for students. Other teachers are making their own, you know, it's the flipped classroom concept where they're creating their own references or supports for students at home. But it's really a shift, the reference materials tend to be, I imagine what you're thinking of is like a grammar explanation. And that's something we're, the grammar is important as long as it helps with a communication goal. And we really want to step away from getting, having students be bogged down in heavy grammar explanations, which really don't help them communicate or learn in the language. So the grammar explanations are really subsidiary to using the language and speaking with it. So it's sort of a shift. So I would, I guess I would say that, so that teachers are pulling together resources from different areas, some textbooks, some online, some video, and so on, and so on, to help students. And I will just point out that for Latin is the one exception because it's really a reading-based curriculum. We do need to have a book, so that's not the area that we're leaving the textbooks.
And then the other question I had was about the online courses. And I'm just wondering if you could explain how they work logistically for the students?
Sure. So we're offering them as an elective. There is a small fee, however, so students will sign up through BYU. It's around $200 for a year. It does offer a scholarship, so I've had, and they've actually been fairly generous. I had two students this year alone who got almost full, you know, if it's $200, they paid 20 for the course. And the district, I think, in at least one or two cases, has paid ourselves for a student. So we've tried to be conscious of students who may need some financial support. So students register online through BYU and I'm actually the person that facilitates them, so I'm their official proctor for the course, so I can see their grades. And I go through in Power School and, you know, monitor their grades in BYU and put the grades into Power School. I'm in email contact with the students. They come by my office for questions or help. I had two students come by today with a question because the end of the term's coming up. So I'm sort of overseeing and facilitating. And then they do have a final exam that's mailed to me, so I'm the proctor for that exam. But it's pretty nice. They also have online speaking component. I mean, speaking is the one piece that you feel like you would miss in an online course, and it really is. But they try to compensate, they have what they call a conversation café, so students have to log in and have a conversation. Or for American Sign Language, they're having a Skype conversation to show their signing skills with them, but that's the logistical explanation.
Are they doing it in the library?
Oh, sure, sorry. So students are working independently on the course. They are allowed to use the language lab. A number of them prefer to use the media center, so it's not a course that attendance is taken for, they work on their own, but I'm kind of monitoring them on a weekly basis. Some students do it at home, and that's fine as long as they're working about an hour a day on the course. And, you know, I would say, I'm thinking of one student who had some other issues and wasn't able to complete the course, but I think all of our students have been very successful in these courses.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Hinner.
A couple of things. First off, in that Latin assessment with the gladiatorial, was that a pass fail?
No.
No, I meant, I'm kidding. If they survive the bump, that's all. The second part, I just want to share with you, in the military language course, there's total immersion and it begins with their first day in the dining room. And if they do not ask for the, they get exactly what they ask for. They learn quickly.
Sure.
Thank you for everything you've done.
No problem.
I think it's fantastic.
Mr. Tillman.
So the 98% all taught in the language, how do you measure that?
How do you, so the national guideline's 90%. So how do you measure it? Yeah, it's...
It's a 48-minute class, it's 47 minutes, right?
So, that's a good question. So people get confused, I don't mean to get too into the pedagogy here, but the, people get confused, what does 90% mean? So 90% does not mean that I'm kind of timing myself and maybe if I translate a little bit here and there in English, I'm still like 90% of the time in French, that's okay. It means being conscious about when you're choosing to use, and purposeful about when you're choosing to use English. Because there's that 10% that you say, okay, you could use English. So the times that it's appropriate to use English in a foreign language classroom are referring to the goal, reflecting on the goal, you know, having students set goals for themselves, I mean, that type of thing, having, you know, even sometimes assessment prompts, because the purpose of the assessment prompt is to kind of motivate and get the student engaged, that might be a time where it's appropriate to use English. So really, if you walk into the classroom, maybe you, and a lot of the teachers are at 100%, I will just say that, that they just don't want to speak English anymore. But what might be, and which is good, they want to, just the kids, you know, I'm in Spanish, that's it. But what might be appropriate is that the beginning, first five minutes, I review the goal with you, I review the agenda, I ask if there's any questions, and they'll say, okay, now the rest of the class up until the last five minutes is 100% in French or Spanish. And then the last five minutes, we reflect, okay, did we meet our goals? How do you think we did? So those are when English is being purposefully used and thoughtfully. So not for, as Dr. Bodie mentioned, these sort of translations that we want to avoid.
So now my, I'm going to talk to my son all in Spanish now that I know it. So that's it. You know, I was, I took, you know, I'm...
I know you're fluent in Spanish.
Yeah, I wasn't going to, but I took Spanish years ago in college. And then when I went to South, when I went to Peru, I'm interested in the gender improvement in Peru. I was there about five years ago. I don't know how much it's improved, but okay, I'll take the study for what it says. But I'll never forget in one of my classes, in one of the classes, which is all in Spanish, this whole thing I had to do for eight weeks, the inflections and the way they would talk to, what was the word you used?
Cognates?
No, no, no. The way, the way they, the teaching method?
The body, body language?
Yeah, body language. So in one class, you know, I was yawning. And so I'll never forget how, that's why I learned the word bostesando, because she made fun of me in the whole class. She said, "Estás bostesando."
I forgot it again.
Never forgot it, yeah. That was actually a good way to learn the word.
That's the total physical response.
Total physical, yeah. It was a total physical response, she got right in my face. So, and then I figured out what bostesando meant.
Right. You figured it out, problem-solving skills.
I was limited, I was limited. I made progress.
So, yep.
Thank you. Great, this is very exciting.
Mr. Carden.
So I wanted to ask about the sixth grade program.
Sure.
I guess, long before my time on the committee, there was a different program, then we went through the budget crisis, and that was changed to just like a survey program where they went through different languages over the year. And then last year, it was changed to, they get to pick a language and they only do that language for due date, to date, every other day, I guess. But then in seventh grade, they can pick it, basically they start all over again. So how does that work? Why do we do it that way?
Sure.
Is it only because of budget or...
Yeah, it's been a couple of years. It wasn't last year, I think it was at least two or possibly three. We have gone through a few different models with the sixth grade. When I came in, it was a different model. We tried the, what's called the exploratory model, which is problematic for a number of reasons, and then we said, you know what, we're just going to start the language. So the current model we have is students choose a language in sixth grade and then they study, it's every other day is the way that we have the current program. And then at the end of the year, we give the student, we do give the students a choice of switching. So they're not officially, I wouldn't say that they're starting over in seventh grade, so we've got around 75% of the students that stick with their language, but there's a couple that want to switch. And the reason we did it this way is because we do have transfer students who might come in. We have a number of students that are, don't take a language in sixth grade because they're in academic support classes. So we wanted to have a flexible program in the seventh grade to welcome new students in, so to not be exclusive. So let's say 75% of the kids in the Spanish class took it in sixth grade and then you got a few students that are new into the course. So this might, so yes, there's a review at the beginning of the year in the seventh grade, but because the bulk of the students have had the language before, you can go fairly quickly through it and it actually brings up the level of those students who may not have had the language last year. So we're trying to strike a balance where those few new students aren't going to be totally behind, but it's also not a totally slow. So there is, again, it's a review, but it's a fairly quick review that brings the students up. And we've tried to plan, it's not entirely possible because you're beginning the language, you're going to be repeating certain topics, but we've tried to think of different things that might happen in sixth that would happen then in the seventh. But that's the structure of the program currently. So, you know, it's just a challenge when we're trying to find, we want to be inclusive and allow students in. So if it were 100% of the kids were taking it all year and we knew that was it, you know, we could be stricter about that, but we've, that's the balance we've tried to strike. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Well, I'm going to ask the obvious question, which is about Gibbs. So we have a, we'll have a new school in a couple of years and so potentially the opportunity for a new model.
Right.
Do you have any thoughts about what you might recommend?
Well, so yes, Dr. Bodie and Dr. Jess and I have been talking a lot about what we could potentially do at the Gibbs. So we haven't made any final decision, we've been thinking about some different scenarios. I think what's important for me, I think Arlington really should be proud of the diverse language offerings that we have. This is actually, if you look at other districts, you might find two languages, and the fact that we've got four in the middle and five in the high school is really, I think, a point of pride for this town. At the same time, we're able to do that because we've got some larger schools. So we've got a mid-sized high school, we're able to do this. We have enough students that are interested that we can offer a range of languages. The middle school's been fairly large, so we've been able to kind, to pull off four languages. If we're moving to a smaller model with the Gibbs, which is what's going to be happening, it becomes really challenging to keep that high level of diversity with all four languages. So I think we're, I hope we're going to find a balance where we can keep some of the linguistic diversity in our program while also recognizing the constraints around, you know, the smaller school, the staffing, the scheduling constraints, and so on. So I think that's, I hope the direction we're moving in with our ultimate program. So no decision has been made, but that's sort of some of our preliminary thinking.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Actually, one more question.
Sure.
I've been asking of everyone. So you said a little bit about how you feel that foreign language has evolved over the last, you know, 10, 15 years. Where do you see it going in the future? So where do you see sort of us or Arlington evolving in the next five to 10 years?
You know, there's really, I've mentioned the word proficiency a lot tonight. There's a proficiency movement afoot. It's something we've been talking about when I meet with other teachers from other districts or other department heads. You know, you ask the question, what is a one, what is a two? It's sort of arbitrary. There's a lot of discussion in other districts about, that I'm participating in as well and really questioning, can we refocus our courses to really have a proficiency-based model where we're saying you're hitting a novice high and now you can move into the intermediate-low group? That's something that needs a lot of thought. It's a complicated change. It's just a very different program structure than the one that not just we're accustomed to in Arlington, but really every school I'm familiar with has...
So people could, students could move at their own level, you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Which is exciting, but presents, it's just a very different structure model. That's really where I see foreign language going is, and in, so in an ideal world, yeah, you could, when you've hit novice high, you can test out and move into the intermediate-low. And some students, you know, I said that the intermediate can take a long time, some students are much quicker. Maybe they already speak Portuguese at home and they can whip right through the Spanish up to the advanced level. So do they really need to go through level two, level three, level four? Could they move more quickly? But that's just not the structure we have right now. So I'd say that's something that we're, I've been thinking about and have had conversations about, but I don't think we're quite there to make that kind of a radical shift in the structure of our program, but...
Great, okay.
Perhaps.
Great. Thanks for coming here and telling us about the program and we've learned a lot.
Thank you so much. It's really a pleasure to speak about our program and I appreciate as well the support of the school committee and the administration in letting us run such a great program. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Okay, so we have sort of an open discussion about school committee priorities for the budget. And actually, let me start, Dr. Allison Epi, do you want to sort of introduce this topic or is there something that budget can say at this point?
I guess I can talk about what budget, what happened at our budget subcommittee meeting because it may have some pertinent to this. So we reviewed the current revised ASK document, which unfortunately I don't, I'm not seeing on Novus.
Oh, right.
And we'll make sure that it gets to you guys tomorrow, well, I guess, yeah, tomorrow.
Okay.
But we reviewed that, we reviewed the expectations for funds and what all we're going to have, and the bottom line is that we have even less money than we thought that we did, which we'll hear more from Ms. Johnson later. Right now, the difference between what we're going to get and our kind of things that we have to fund, the salary increases and stipend and all of that, leaves about $120,000. So we also did some discussion of, is there anywhere else we could free up some money? And one of the ways that we are in discussion about is the possibility of using some of, so over the past five years or so, we've been taking our circuit breaker money and keeping it until the next year and then spending it. We're discussing whether, since next year, we're going to be getting a much larger amount of circuit breaker money.
Because this year it's been so high.
Assuming that reimbursements are the same and everything. Next year, we're going to be getting a lot more because we're spending a lot more this year.
Right.
We're discussing whether we could take some of that extra circuit breaker money and use it in FY18. It certainly has small amounts of risk because, you know, anytime we decrease our padding, we're more exposed if anything happens.
And can you explain our usual practice then, would not be to touch that money till...
Our usual practice would not be to touch that money until FY19.
Right, okay.
And Mr. Carden has prepared something that would say, using some of it now and then sort of paying it back to ourselves over the next few years so that eventually we're back at the same, not touching it at all. We've asked Ms. Johnson and she's asked the appropriate staff member to get us a better estimate of how much circuit breaker money we would expect, assuming usual reimbursements and stuff.
Right, right.
And we feel, you know, the first thing is to understand, have an understanding of what the amount of money that we're talking about is. My back-of-the-envelope calculation would say around $400,000 extra.
Extra than this year?
Yeah, extra, but that's, that's a very rough, not knowing any much details and making guesses. Ms. Johnson has put it at $200,000 or $300,000.
Okay.
And, I mean, that's her back-of-the-envelope.
Yeah.
So we're talking about the possibility of being able to supplement that whole $120,000 with perhaps $100 to $300-ish. But again, this is all, you know, we just started the discussions, we haven't got the numbers.
And is this, I know that last time we spoke, there was a discussion of sort of reserving a couple hundred thousand for possible increases in special ed costs.
That's already, that's already built in.
That's already built in. So that, we're still making that assumption that those, that amount is being reserved? Okay.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what you said.
So last time, there was a recommendation by Ms. Johnson to reserve, to save about $200,000 and not spend it for the possible increase of special ed costs next year?
So that's, yeah, that's built into the base budget going forward.
Okay, okay.
So that's kind of the framework to give you an idea. We'll know, it's going to probably be a week or two before we have even the estimate of things, so maybe at the next meeting we'll have a better idea of, and we can discuss because, you know, this is our idea, it's, everyone has to agree to it.
Right.
And I know there are people who are not in favor of it, but we're concerned that there's big needs in the schools and that this is not the best time to be sitting on big pots of money if we feel it's not absolutely necessary.
Right, right. So why don't we, if people want to comment on that now, let's do that first and then let's go around and talk about what people's priorities would be for that limited amount that would be left.
Just one thing.
Yes, sir.
We are also, we being the central office, are looking into the FY17 budget closely. And while we are not there yet in terms of what recommendations we would make for some reductions, we, that is one of our goals too, is to be able to free up some money going into FY18 as well. And I... And I, and as we work on that over the next few weeks, we will be presenting, the superintendent's budget will be going to Swifty's at the end of the month and not be presented till the February 9th. But I think by the time we get to January 26th, we'll have a much better idea as to what some, what those numbers will be.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Hayner.
Just a question. Our budget going forward, and with all the concerns that we have going, we'll be entering negotiations with the teachers, with the staff next year.
Next year.
Is that something looking ahead that we have to be concerned with?
Well, I think.
I'm not trying to scare anybody ahead.
Don't know what our numbers will be exactly.
I understand, but we're, we're, we're looking at a budget right now that none of us are happy with, with what we got. I just wanna be prepared for everything going forward, that's all. It doesn't have to be answered tonight.
So I have to say, one of I think our issues is that we've had a larger increase this year than we had last year, right, in terms of students, number of students. And since we always get paid a year later, we're getting paid for the slightly smaller increase from last year, but having to serve the larger amount of students this year. And that's, you know, that's just an issue. Okay, Mr. Dillon.
So I have a couple of questions. Is the process in which you're gonna be evaluating possible savings based on, you know, your assessment of FY17, gonna be complete by the end of the month or when are you gonna?
Yes.
It is?
It will need to be.
So you'll, you'll kind of, you'll, by the end of the month, you'll complete your analysis and let's say you might shade, you might find savings of X. And then this process gives us another X.
Why?
Why? Thank you. And then what, it equals Z?
Totally.
The finance committee comes along.
May not be the same number.
Okay. So we don't, so in other words, when are we gonna have, so the meeting on the, so before the budget goes to Swifty, we're not gonna have a chance to know what the actual number is. We're not, right? We're not gonna, so let's say that number's a half a million.
That's optimistic.
Okay. Say it's 350,000. Okay. We're not gonna know that for sure.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna give you the proposed budget on the 9th.
On the 9th.
And then you guys have at it. Then it becomes your budget. You can do whatever you want.
So it gets printed, but it's not set in stone, obviously it's printed.
Absolutely. It is, it is yours to do with as you will at that point. But I'd like, I'd like to say that my, and I speak only for myself in this, I would hope that I can, we can dig enough out of the FY17 budget so that we make that not a good option.
You don't like that idea?
I hate that option passionately. And so if I can find enough money to meet our top priorities without doing that, I would much prefer to do so.
Because you think it's too risky, is that?
I think circuit breaker is a movable feast and part of the deficit that I enjoyed so much when I came here was due to a circuit breaker mistake and how it was budgeted. I just don't think you should ever go down that road again. If we can meet the top priorities of the senior, of the senior administrators, without doing that, we absolutely should.
Yeah, I asked just why. Can I get like a, I'd like to get a better flavor for the whole discussion.
So, I mean, so I look at it as, as a time, timing issue. So we've had this increase this year. Under this, under the circuit breaker formula by the state.
The increase in spending.
They, they fund you a year and a years.
Right.
Because they, they can't fund you in advance because they don't know what your expenses are going to be. So you spend the money and then a year later, you get reimbursed for it. We've, we've adopted a very conservative approach where we actually wait an additional year.
Yes.
So we had this big increase and we have to wait two years to get reimbursed for that. And that creates a crunch over that two-year period. So what we're suggesting is shorten it so that the crunch is only one year. And then we, we would ideally get back on this process because there are some benefits of having a firm number on the circuit breaker in your budget. Over, over time, another maybe three or four years out, we'll be back on track, assuming stabilization and not another jump that we have to deal with again. So, so to me, it's a timing issue. And, and, you know, we did have that one problem. There was a crisis situation where circuit breaker was cut to 40% and nobody, nobody reacted. And, and I think, first of all, we're all much more aware of that. We're also in a much more stable environment. And we'll know by the end of the month, a pretty good idea of what our circuit breaker is going to be. So for fiscal 2018, based on the governor's budget, it's not gonna be below that. So I think we're on very solid ground. We're talking about $300,000 at the most. And, and we have some dire needs. I mean, we, we can't do some of the things, do without some of the things that are required. I mean, if we get 80 or more students at Thompson and Hardy, we have to add teachers at both of those schools.
Right.
In kindergarten. So, so I'm not talking about adding vice principals or, or funding sort of nice-to-haves. I'm talking about these core necessities. And, and I think the way we've done the timing is conservative and nice-to-have, but it's not something that we can live with this year.
And so just in terms of people, do people know the timing, the governor's budget is coming out in when? Do we know?
Yeah, early, early February.
Early February, okay. So we'll have a sense of it then.
Last Wednesday of January.
Okay, okay.
You know, you'll, you'll get a sense and you'll be able to check with Desi because, you know, you'll know what the governor has written into the budget for the circuit breaker line item. The thing you won't know is the denominator, how much, how much claims from school districts will be there. So that's sort of the variable that plays out. But there's a reasonable expectation, a reasonable trend. You could always get a budget number, a percentage of, of your reimbursement that you're likely to get at this point. Desi's very willing to do that. So I, I do think that taking all the circuit breaker out and putting it in reserve for another year is an assumption that we might get zero circuit breaker and we're being defensive. Now, we're not gonna get 100% of the circuit breaker, we're not gonna get zero. We're gonna get somewheres in between. And if we take a very conservative approach at what that circuit breaker number's gonna be, I see no reason why we shouldn't be able to meet a budget gap, particularly because we've got an extraordinary increase in our out-of-district payments that are generating more circuit breaker that we need to reimburse ourselves for.
Right, right. So actually, just a clarifying question. Is this money then is put in a reserve account?
It's in a standalone grant account.
Okay, okay. Ms. Darks.
So I'm wondering if we have done the analysis for like, not just next year, but the year after and the, like, do we know that it's gonna get better? Or is it gonna be tight like this for the next?
Do we know that our budget situation's gonna get better?
Yes, because we're talking like we're expecting more money in the next year and I don't understand why we think that.
Bigger group of students this year, so we know we're gonna get that money, right?
That, that's not a major chunk of money to depend on. You don't believe, I, I, sorry.
I would just really like to have, see us, before we do anything, have that view. I would like to know, you know, if we just get what we know the town, I mean, we, we, we know what the town is gonna give us. We know what we're gonna get. I mean, if we just make those assumptions, do we know what it looks like? I mean, is it tight for the next five years, 10 years? I mean, does it ever get any better? Or is this like now we have to be in this really like tight, like we're not gonna be able to do much for quite a while?
It's tight until we pass an override.
Or we pass the millionaire tax.
Well, but, yeah, but there's no certainty with that.
No certainty, but.
Yeah, we have to negotiate with the town.
But I mean, you know, the Long Range Planning Committee has been planning, has been looking at this. And the numbers don't change until the override, which we're talking about for fiscal FY20.
And that's an assumption, right? That's.
Nineteen possibly.
Or nineteen.
Nineteen, it's, right, okay. So we're in a conversation.
But we don't know that we're gonna get an increase if there is an override. We, it could just be a.
That's what I wanna know. Are we gonna change the formula at that point?
Well, so, the conversation's getting broad. But that's, I mean, I think, you know, so that's, so the Long Range Planning Committee, Kirsty and I are on that committee. We're in a conversation about whether an override should take place in FY19 or FY20. There's a, there's a feeling on that committee that the, you know, the increase is always 10%, so it's gonna be 10%. We haven't gotten to a discussion about what that increase should be yet. I think that's a conversation we should have and I think there should be a lot of public involvement in that because we need to know how much money we actually need to operate the district. So.
Right. Well, and that's changing with the more students we have. And the problem is, is that the infrastructure we have was based on many fewer students. And now that we have more and more students, I mean, the requests that we're getting are all infrastructure. And we can't, we can't support the students we have.
I'm not wedded to the 10%. I don't feel like the 10% is the way you have to go.
Well, we also know we have a building that we're gonna have to staff. So I mean, I, I don't see things getting sort of looser, but given that we have a building that we have to staff.
Exactly. I mean, I feel like what, what I see is our needs are growing.
Yeah.
And I don't see that we're gonna have a lot of money year after year until we change how we're getting money. And so that's what makes me nervous about doing this kind of thing. If we're gonna, you know, then it just starts getting worse.
Okay. Dr. Allison Epi.
Okay, you're right. We don't, I mean, we can try and do what you're talking about, but the bottom line is, it's not going to get better until the formula is changed. But we are coming to, and, and we're coming to a point where we're going to need to discuss changing the formula because we're opening a new school, because we're getting so many more students, because the high school is going to be starting to be rebuilt and, and I would expect possibly changing its program of studies and stuff. This is why we've been asking for the past couple of years, the staff to provide a really detailed needs analysis, not just, these are wants that we think, you know, the few wants that we think will drift to the top that we can fund. We're trying to find out what the real needs are and then how much they are so that we have information that we can then go and use to build a case for this is what the funding of the schools needs to be. Another outside thing that's going on was I saw that, that Senator Chang Diaz has put in an amendment to try and get the foundation budget more fully funded. And that would be an absolute godsend. So we can only hope and push for that.
I mean, millionaire tax might help with that.
Right, so all of these things are kind of in the air. If we use the extra money from the circuit breaker, it does put off things for a year. I don't think it makes us, we're not talking about using beyond the chunk that would need to be passed forward to maintain the current services. We're talking about kind of using that extra bit. If we use beyond that, then I think we'd be setting ourselves up to go into a crash later.
Right, right.
It does mean that there, you know, the next year, we can't, we probably can't keep doing this forever. But it gets us one more year of better funded services instead of sitting on it and trying, the bottom line is, we can't, the current funding formula, in my opinion, does not adequately staff our schools as we grow.
Right.
Right? We had that same, I know it's supposed to, it doesn't.
We, when we did it, we added only teachers and the needs for students and didn't realize that then the infrastructure was also, when the infrastructure started to balloon.
Well, we got, we got what we could get.
We got what we could get.
Yeah, at the time.
Right, this is what we got, right?
2011.
So I think it'd be helpful to see a particular proposal out there. You know, you know, I mean, to get like real numbers and then what's a plan? You said we might wanna play it back and I think it'd be really useful to, to get that sort of on the table.
Yeah, we can, we need to get the estimate, which is.
Right.
Turning.
Yeah, yeah. So by next meeting, do we think we can sort of discuss?
It'll have to be.
It'll have to be, okay. So that's, that'd be really helpful. Wait, Mr. Carden had something?
Yeah, so, so for that, I agree with everything Kirsty said. I mean, I do think the, the formula is on the table. I think, you know, going for an education-only override should be on the table, something that we need to discuss next year. If, if we're getting pushback on a townwide override that meets our needs. So all that can be on the table. This particular problem though is, is special ed-related. And we had a large increase this year.
Right.
And, and we do get reimbursed for it, it just that is, the timing is a year later. And our policy puts the timing two years later. So that creates a two-year period where, where we're making up the money from elsewhere. This year, we're making it up from, from our reserve fund. Next year, we don't have a place to make it up from.
Right.
So if we can dip into that other reserve fund and move that money forward, that's what, just solves part of that, that one little problem with, with this sudden increase in special education. If it happens again in two years, then we have the same problem. But if it stabilizes, hopefully, then it's not and we can make up that money more gradually. So, so again, we can have a more definite proposal once we know the number and hopefully it'll make sense to everyone.
Okay, Mr. Hayner.
I like what you're presenting. I, I see it going forward. I'm nervous about taking from Peter to pay Paul. So it's very important to have the facts and numbers for the next meeting for this. Thank you very much for all the work you've done.
Okay, so I know we're over-scheduled, but we haven't gotten to our main topic, which is that we, we want to talk about our priorities as school committee members. And so I want to go sort of down the line and have each person sort of say where, you know, we've heard from curriculum leaders, we've heard from other people. And I wanna sort of hear everyone's perspective. So, Mr. Carden.
Sure. So, you know, without seeing an administration take on what they think are the priorities out of the other, out of all of the priorities, given that we may only have 300 or 400,000. You know, to me, you know, unfortunately, we have to do what we've been doing in the past and that's filling the classroom teachers. I think definitely at the middle school and the high school, we definitely need to add teaching staff because we've been neglecting those. We were able to add some from the sort of found money at the beginning of this year. But, but those needs are definitely dire. Sort of the enhancement type things, like the assistant principals, unfortunately are gonna have to wait. And then I think the administration has to have a discussion amongst themselves. You know, is, is the high school dean position more critical than some of the other, you know, some of the curriculum materials that they, that they want? And, and I'm not sure where we fall on that. As far as the elementary school principals, I understand, I hear what they're saying. But I, but I, before we made that investment, even if we had the money, before we made that investment, I, I need a stronger case for that. You know, I would, I would wanna see more specifically, what is the tipping point in other districts when they add an assistant principal? I do know there's, there's several other 400 student schools that don't have assistant principals that I'm familiar with. So, you know, is it, is it 500, is it 450? You know, is there a tipping point? What's, what's typical? What are those people, are, what are those people specifically gonna do? I mean, we've added social workers to every school to help, to help address social, emotional needs. Is there some other resource that we can add instead of having five assistant principals? Maybe there's sort of a floating assistant principal who can, you know, go in a school, go in each school one day a week or something else creative rather than adding, you know, spending half a million dollars a year on, on that need. So that's sort of my rough thoughts.
Excellent. Dr. Allison Epi.
So I'll confess that I spent more time trying to figure out where to find money.
Than what?
And I'm still working on it. But I think, honestly, I'm not sure there's too much to look past filling class, putting teachers in front of classes because I think that's going to use up almost all of our money at the various levels. And also making sure that we've got our special education needs funded, although I think they've been doing a little bit better than maybe some of the other things. If there is some amount extra, I'm interested in the possibility of maybe doing one assistant principal at the highest, the school that either has the highest population or the highest need, because those aren't always the same. Even possibly part-time, doing it on a trial basis, having some ideas of what questions are we gonna ask as they do this? And, you know, how can we find out if this is worthwhile or what the functionality is adding to the school? So at the end of the year, we'd have a better idea of, yes, this is a good thing we should be doing or no, maybe we should look at maybe adding another social worker or, you know, something. I, I understand that the principals are feeling stretched and I feel like the, with the changes in the teacher evaluation, that's added a lot to their workload, plus the social, emotional things that are going on with kids. I can see that there, there is a stretch with growing, the growing populations that they probably could use some more professional hands that can do evaluations or something. But I don't see us being able to fund. But I don't see us being able to fund very many, but I would wonder about doing some kind of a trial and looking at it as a trial and having a sense of how we're going to evaluate it at the year's end.
Mr. Schlickman.
The thing that resonated with me were the cries for help on the administrative and leadership level, partly because that's my life and what I do. Leadership counts, and having great principals is really an important part of having a great school. And if we create a situation where it's impossible for these folks to do the job that we're paying them an extraordinary, you know, a significant salary at, we are losing from one of the most important things of making a quality school. Doesn't mean that we need to add a second administrator per se, but we should be looking through any kind of a method we can to really thoughtfully analyze what our principals are spending their days on. Are they being instructional leaders? Are they doing administrative tasks? And to find ways of removing those administrative tasks from the shoulders of the principals so they can focus on working with teachers, working with families, and doing the things that make a school great that only a principal can do. Wallace Foundation funded a study, and it was done mostly outside of Massachusetts, I think entirely outside of Massachusetts, of the School Administration Manager Project, and basically bringing in somebody to be the, to do the administrative stuff in support of the principal, to schedule the appointments, to schedule, you know, to go hunt down a substitute lunch monitor, to do all the kinds of things that principals need to do in a reactive manner that takes away from their time of being an instructional leader within the building. So I would think that we really should think carefully about what kind of a model we can provide to clarify the support that's needed on the elementary principals and to provide them something that is going to make their quality of life better and enable them to do the job that we hired them to do. The additional dean at the high school is very persuasive. When the teachers come in and say, "We need another administrator," that's sort of a 95th percentile kind of thing. I think we should pay very careful attention to that. I don't see us adding too much this year besides just sort of trying to stay where we're at right now in terms of providing as level of service as possible. But those are my thoughts. I'm not being overly ambitious with this.
Ms. Darks.
I think, you know, I think we have to, I agree with what basically everybody said, which is, you know, teaching and learning has to come first, safety and health, and then if there's anything left over, I mean, the administration, I believe that the infrastructure is starting to really bear the strain of all the students that we have and wherever that need is greatest. So it's a big job of prioritizing, you know, all of that, you know. Where is, where is it that the cracks are greatest? We have to fill those first and then kind of hope that everyone else can hold on.
Mr. Hayner.
We've invested an awful lot of money, time, both administrative and teacher-wise on the new evaluation system over the past couple of years. I fear that it has potentially going to fall apart on the strain on the principals, especially at the elementary level. I had a meeting today with Dr. Chesson to help me understand several things about teacher certification and evaluation and just looking at that process for one teacher, the amount of time a principal has to do with a professional teaching status teacher, which is about half the time.
Right.
And a brand-new teacher, is just horrendous. And all it will take in the schedule of time and everything, one disruption to call the principal for something that isn't unscheduled, and that could have a ripple effect through the whole day or through the whole process.
Right.
And I can remember 30 years ago, teachers being rehired because they did not have the support to improve themselves, and they weren't improving, and then all sorts of problems. We have a wonderful staff. We need to continue to keep that staff. So my number-one priority is finding a way to get them the assistance they need. Some school systems, Mr. Schlickman mentioned it, it may not be a full-time one. Some have a half-time teaching position, half-time administrative position just for the purpose of setting up time for evaluation every single day so that when those other needs calls that evaluator away, that other person covers it. Creative way. We are a very, we have a very creative top administrative staff. The problem is, they find ways of doing things when we don't have the money, and people expect us to continue doing. The magic wand is wearing out.
Mr. Thiemann.
Well, I think it's been said that, you know, we have to staff to enrollment, so we have to have enough teachers to teach the children that are gonna be in the school district next year at all levels. I was very persuaded by the whole argument at the high school about the need for an extra dean. Having an extra dean in the high school provides support to teachers. It allows, it gives more, it gives more support for teachers and it makes sure that they are able to do their jobs and focus on teaching and learning and not discipline and other issues. And so there was a very persuasive case made for the dean. I think ultimately the superintendent and her staff has to make a decision about, you know, how high of a priority is. But having heard that, I was persuaded by it, and I thought it was, I thought it was well-presented and I was, I think it's the right way to go.
And I'll give you my thoughts. So one thing I've heard from the last few years from both teachers and administrators is how much time and how difficult it is to find substitute teachers. I think it would be great if we could see a small bump, and I don't have clear numbers about what that's gonna cost us. It would also be really helpful to, and we've done this in the past, to hire sort of permanent floating substitutes that we could then deploy as needed, that we know we can rely on rather than each day trying to scramble and find people. Unfortunately, I think this is, we are a victim of the improving economy, and it's, there are just fewer people desperate for those kind of jobs that we pay and that, you know, even a large bump might still lead problems. And that's why I think it might be more helpful to hire somebody, say, you're here for a year, you're doing substitute teaching. Give them training. On that matter, one of the things I was very intrigued by is the Odison principals' suggestion that we do more training of our TAs because that's something that I think that, given that we can't pay as much as other districts, if we can offer training to people, that we can say, "Listen, this is a really good district to get your start in, and we can provide a lot of oversight and a lot of training for you." And that's something that might be extremely effective at a relatively minimal cost. So those are the things I've, I do think that at some point in the future, we want to hire maybe half-time assistant principals, three for the district or something. I was persuaded that the idea that this is a potential leadership channel, you know, that we will have people who could assume leadership positions if we need it is beyond, besides also the use that they'd be in the day-to-day operation of the schools. I don't know if we can afford it this year, but I think, I think it should be a high priority for us in future years. Dr. Brody, do you want to say anything?
Well, we've been working on, among all of the needs, what are the top priorities? And you've hit on basically all of them, though there are other ones as well that we really need to consider carefully. As you heard tonight, how much the World Language Department is utilizing technology? And the one that we also heard, and Jason Levy is here.
I'm sorry, I forgot to recognize him.
But the teachers want more technology support, too, and so there's that issue of desktop support. There's the curriculum materials, and certainly, one of the things that Mr. Carden mentioned that the middle school, particularly the high school, has had the FTE increases for staffing they need, and that is coming to a point of necessity. So that exists. But then there's also the necessity when you get students at the elementary, there's a certain limit to how many students you can put in a class. So we're definitely staffing there. So those are the biggies that we've also identified as well and keep trying to, you know, get that even more trimmed out. But the challenge is gonna be, is we're gonna certainly work on the revenue side of things and what the assumptions are. And then we're gonna have to match the priorities to that amount of money. And I think that's gonna be, it is turning out to be a very difficult task, and it will continue to be, but that's, that's our job to do that. And so you'll have a chance, we will do that over the next couple of weeks, and then you'll have a chance to weigh in as well as we go forward with all of this. I don't know if you want to pass this on and see if.
Ms. Johnson or Dr. Chesson?
Certainly, we have been discussing as a staff, and Dr. Brody has summarized those. I think the one other, or actually the two other things that I need to touch a base on are that we've put a great deal of money, both from the operation budget and the capital budget, into technology. And we're putting a lot of technology into the schools. But the amount of support that we have staff to help teachers learn to use that technology is far less than we need. And so we're gonna have to make a little bit, at least a little bit of movement on that. Otherwise, we're just gonna be putting good money after bad. And the other thing is, when we look at the interventions that we're trying to put in place at the elementary schools, half the time, we can't get all the students that we need to get because those students are not accessible to us because of the schedule. And that schedule is sorely constrained by the limit of the specialist teachers at the elementary schools. And, you know, we're not able to get teachers together. We're not able to get students together in groups because of the schedule. We have some students that may be missing parts of the core curriculum in very few cases, but still, any case is too much because of the specialist schedule. So those are two other things that I think we're gonna have to look at.
Ms. Johnson? Do you want to add? You don't have to. Okay.
Well, we also know, and I'll add one. The recommendation had been made to increase our learning specialists at the elementary. And we see it as something necessary as we, as we work as a district to narrow this achievement cap to make sure that all students are able to be successful. And one of the ways to do that would be to create more, more support for teachers in the classroom with special education teachers. Last year, we made some inroads in that where we had now a couple of schools with three learning specialists so that they can focus on only two grades rather than three. But that's not across the district. So that's, that also remains out there as another unmet.
I think, you know, when we talk about the budget drivers being on a district, tuitions, students don't go from a general ed classroom out of district.
They go immediately.
They go through special education and then out of district.
Right.
So, I mean, the other piece, as I would say, is the priorities. We continue to talk about the demands of social, emotional needs on students, and we're talking about the demands that creates on principals. And, you know, we have limited funds to do very little with. I do think the director of social, emotional learning slash guidance, whatever you want to call that role, really looking at the whole district and building the capacity of individuals within the schools to meet those needs. It could be paratraining, it could be staff training, it could be building safe and supportive schools teams. I think, again, you know, thinking about what will affect the largest amount and get the most out of. So that's where I would place my priority.
Great. Thanks. Uh, Mr. Hayner.
I just want to ask a question. The program that we had, I don't know what it's called now, it used to be called Millbrook, and we were talking about probably expanding that into the middle school and stuff. Is, are we looking to increase the funding in that to make those things happen? I'd like to make, let me rephrase that. I don't need, we're on time now. I'd like to make that even a higher priority, I think, than what I said before, only based on the fact that I think that saves us an awful lot of money in the long run. I'm being very materialistic about it in that potential aspect of it.
We're meeting on this very topic next week about what to do. We also don't know what the effect yet are gonna be of the new regulations that kicked in. So that's another unknown. And another unknown is where Millbrook's gonna be next year.
Yeah, the location.
The whole special education thing may change. This is Supreme Court case going right now. If they up the, if they up the ante on that, that's gonna have a phenomenal, I don't even go there. Thank you.
Okay. So I know we're over-scheduled, but I think this is an important discussion to have and to have fully. Next, we're moving on to the monthly financial reports.
Did you want a motion tonight?
Oh, do we need, oh, we need a motion. You're right. I'm sorry.
Yes.
We need a motion to vote the number that we are receiving from the town. And so, do we want to, do you want to read it?
So move that the school committee accepts the proposed town appropriation amount of $60,928,485 for the FY '18 school department budget.
Great. Okay. Motion by Mr. Thiemann, seconded by Mr. Hayner. Any discussion? Dr. Allison Eppi?
I'm just gonna make the statement that we've had discussions here before that this year, we are not, we recognize that we have a lot of unmet needs that we will not be able to meet with the budget. But we are choosing not to try and push our, we're gonna work within the number that we're given.
Okay.
This year.
Great. Mr. Carden.
Yeah, so I'm going to abstain because I think this process is still the wrong way to do things. I understand that the town manager needs to put something in his budget, but for us to agree to that without actually getting our own budget together first just seems backwards to me. So I'm gonna abstain. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, time to vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? So anybody opposed? No, and abstentions? So we have two abstentions, Mr. Carden and Mr. Hayner, and the rest is an aye. Okay. Great. So, monthly financial reports. Johnson.
Hi. The, as you know from the memo, I uncovered, after digging down deeper into the overage in longevity, I discovered a completely nasty surprise. I guess the best thing that can be said is I'm not handing it off to my successor, that I found it before then. We added, we rolled in a lot of teachers. And the way longevity works, it's not as easy to capture out of the payroll. There's no real easy way to capture it. We had been, with the exception of my very first year when we were in deficit, every other budget year, our teacher longevity had hung around 200,000, plus or minus maybe 10. It was very static. And for FY '18, it's gonna be up to 360,000. And that, that change didn't happen overnight. It happened over the course of '16, '17, '18. I didn't do the end-of-the-year report because I was out, so I didn't catch the change in '16. And I didn't, I didn't see it coming when I did '17. So we caught it now. That's the best that can be said.
And just for the public, these are for teachers who are with us for how many years?
In their 13th year, they become.
13th year, they become eligible for a.
And it goes up in gradations over other periods of time.
Just as a footnote, I think it also speaks very loudly to the fact that we, teachers are staying in Arlington, and they stay here for a lot of very positive reasons.
Once again, a victim of our success. Yeah, Mr. Hayner.
Ms. Johnson, I'm not grading the numbers up, but this will not go down. It'll increase for a period of years unless a lot of teachers that don't get there decide to leave.
No, you're gonna see upticks in '19, '20, '21 unless things turn really ugly.
Okay. So other, other points you want to make before we open up to questions? No? Okay. Questions, comments about monthly reports?
I had a series of questions. I managed to lose it all. I'll talk to you offline.
You know where to find me.
Thank you, yes.
All right. And I don't, actually. I've looked, glanced at them, but questions from last time.
To clarify again, I think I asked this last time. The variance, the $821,000 variance, we're making that up how? I mean, I realize we're only.
I am still, I am still very conservatively projecting. I'm still, I'm still very conservatively projecting, but there are some lines that we can really pick up some savings based on what I've seen so far. So I think some of it, we will make up with savings. I think the majority of the special ed out of district overage, we can make up with the reserves we have ourselves and the 325,000 that's with the town. So I think we will close this gap. I think the gap will narrow, assuming I don't kick over any stones and find any other ugly surprises like that. I think, I think it will narrow as we approach the end of the year. If, you know, snow stays good and all the other things happen. I don't think we'll end anything like that big.
Okay.
If things continue as they have started.
That's what I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Is this our, your last meeting with us?
No, I will be here on, I will be here at the end of January and I will be here in February to discuss the budget and then I'll be done.
Okay. Great, thanks. Okay, school calendar. This is for a first reading and not every, everything is on there, but some crucial stuff is. Dr. Boddy, you want to walk us through it?
Yes, I would be happy to do that. Eventually, we probably will be able to get to a multiple year. But right now, it's very important, at least in January, have parents have a very good idea as to when school will start and when school will end because there's a lot of planning that goes on. And then at this point, what we're going to be looking at are the major parts of the calendar. So we will be revisiting the calendar again later and hopefully earlier this spring when we able to identify the, you know, the secondary early release days and conferences and so forth. But for right now, what are you looking at? What is remaining the same for next year is that school will start on the Tuesday after Labor Day. And you can see what the holidays and the no school days are that are, the holidays being state or federal holidays. And then where there have been some no school days, such as the one that's in September. And there is one again later on in, in March. The last day of, pardon?
In November, the teachers.
Yes, and then we're, well, I want to, I was going to come back to that in one second.
Okay.
But let me, since you brought it up, let me bring that up. If you notice, we put the Teacher Professional Day, actually, it's All Staff Professional Day, on Wednesday, November 1st. Earlier this year, I received a petition from the fifth grade. It was actually a petition sent to me about, I don't know, four days before Halloween, asking if we could change the professional day to the day after Halloween. It had very, very interesting perspectives. The teachers would be happier. We're a little crazy with the sugar. We're tired the next day, all of that. And so there wasn't anything that could be done at that point. We, once you set the calendar, I explained that to, the calendar is set. But I said that we would definitely take that into consideration next year. Next year is a year that we can do that.
No election?
Every, no elections. So when we have major elections, which we would consider major state elections and federal elections, the, I have, I've had an agreement for a number of years now with the town hall that we do not have school. It's just too many people to manage on site. On the off years, we have, and we've done this before. We've had professional day at the day after Halloween and I would strongly support this proposal.
Did you tell them that? Have you communicated to the fifth graders?
I told them that I was going to make this recommendation. And if we vote this, I will let them know that this happened.
Yeah, if that's our decision, yeah.
Another, well, let me go back to the last day. So the last day of school, I should say, another way of saying that is the 180th day of school. On our calendar, we are obliged by state regulations to actually have five snow days built into the calendar. So technically, for the purpose of planning, the last day of school is June 25th. In fact, it could even be later than that, depending on how many snow days we have. Fortunately, in the last decade, I think we've had only one year that we've come to five. So there's a pretty good chance that we, that we will not. And next, so, but, but in terms of planning, what that means is that parents and teachers need to be conscious of the 25th when they're, they're setting up summer jobs or camps or whatever. Unfortunately, that means that you're rolling around a weekend and the 20, the 25th is a Monday.
So can I have a question about the EA, the early all?
Early release all.
That's only if that's the last day, right? So if, so if the 18th turns out not to be the last day, we don't have.
That will not be an early release.
Yeah, so I'm not sure we should put it on the calendar that way because it looks like it's a.
I know.
Permanent. It looks like that is, you know, no matter what happens, you know, even if we finish on the 25th, we're having an early release on the 18th.
You can have an early release day. Are the teachers working the rest of the day?
No. Technically, yes.
Thank you, you've answered my question.
They're having, getting grades in.
That's fine.
Yeah, I feel like that's confusing for parents to read that as a permanent part of the calendar that it should be.
Let me see, we did last.
I don't remember that last year, but I'm not sure.
All right, let me see how we can fix that, that piece of it.
I mean, because you'd have this little note saying last day of school is 11:30 dismissal, that sort of.
We could do that.
That information is available to them. I know you're not done, so, but Mr. Hayner, do you have something quick?
Real quick, I know, I'm assuming, we have an early release day on the very first day of school. Is that something?
For elementary school.
I understand. Is that something that we can, I can't imagine coming in for, wow. I don't know.
It's a nice way to start.
Well, we did, when we were in negotiations about this, we talked about that issue. And we decided that for consistency, it's just better to just keep it regardless, just keep it early release. So then why is there not an early release on April 24th? Well, there should be. That's a mistake. We'll have to get that one. Because I was going to say, if you were going to take one off, you might want to make it the first day of school, but. And I can see that we don't have, you know, the whole issue of boulding here.
Yeah, yeah, there's some boulding issues. Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, so we'll figure, fix that. All right, now another piece here, and this is some discussion. It involves the day before the winter, not the winter break, but the holiday break, which is Friday, the 22nd. One of the things that we saw this year on Friday is enormous absences. I'm not saying that this one, this would, this would make a difference, but in fact, it may encourage more.
It may encourage more because it's only a half day, right?
I understand that. In fact, Dr. Susan and I were talking before, back several weeks before the break thing. Well, maybe we should just change it, but.
At the last minute, but it did make sense, yeah.
It was just too confusing. Things like after school care, you don't understand all the ripple effects that involve people when you make a calendar change. So you need, you live with what you make as your judgments at the time.
But you're making this change 12 months early.
Right, no, this is not, no.
If you made the decision, if going forward to not have that as a school day, the only issue at that, I mean, sufficient notification to the community, the only other part would be for you to reschedule whatever you had planned for the teachers that afternoon.
Right. You're saying that there's sufficient time for everybody to understand it.
The only early release day you can have and not have, and allow everybody to go home under the law is the day before Thanksgiving.
Got it.
DESI expects the schools to be functioning for a full day, whether the kids are there or not on the early release day, other than that one day.
Of course, this year, well, is, there's a slightly different issue. I mean, it's not quite as bad as the year we had because of where Christmas is located and for people to celebrate that.
I'm, I'm just putting your base on our discussion and for a discussion at the table.
Got it. Okay, so, Mr. Slipman?
Yeah, Christmas was a Sunday this year.
Right.
And so, actually Lowell was closed on Friday.
A lot of schools were.
So.
And this time it's a Monday.
A lot of folks around in a road on Friday, just in terms of going about doing what I'd normally be doing around here. The highways were packed and people were traveling. I think with Christmas on a Monday, I don't think we'd see that. I don't think Lowell will end up closing on the Friday, the 22nd.
Right. It is a different thing.
I think the pressures to get someplace are going to be a little different in 2017 than it was last year.
Yeah.
That's true.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't see.
You don't see, you don't see the need for this.
I liked, I, I think that in terms of the climate and the way families responded in Lowell this year, that it was a real benefit to them to have the 23rd off, but I think the 22nd is pushing it.
To the point, it may encourage more.
Right, right.
And so I don't think that's what we want to do because when we have school, we have teachers go through their, right, they continue with their curriculum. So one of the things.
Wait, Mr. Carden?
As a counterpoint, I think part of the problem is when you have a full week before that vacation. So if it falls, if the way the holiday falls, you only have four days or three days or two days, then, then, then there's not quite so much pressure. But when the kids are there for the full week.
And they're antsy.
And they're antsy and they're expecting all this stuff. And that Friday was hard on, in the elementary schools in particular. So I actually support, I'd like to hear what your principals say, but I, I do support making that a half day, especially for the elementary schools, if not system wise.
Okay, so two more things.
Yeah.
One is kindergarten. This year, let me remind you what we did this year.
Right.
We began, we've, we've tried, different, tried different ways that we do screening. And for a couple of years, we tried screening the first week of, of school. And the suggestion was that this wasn't working as well as we would have hoped, in part because it didn't give anybody an opportunity to adjust classes. So we started last year doing screening in June and that worked much better. However, there were, because there was a lot of students enrolling during the summer, in fact, a fair amount of kindergartens enrolling, that number of schools were faced with a fairly large number. Most said that it worked, but nonetheless, it was a little bit of a strain. So we've had some discussion with the elementary principals as to how, if we, if we want to change and what we've done this year. So let me remind you what happened. On Tuesday, kindergarten students started school, but they had just an open house. Parents and students came. In some schools, they staggered that, so you'd have groups of 10 coming in. Other schools, they did not do it that way. That's entirely their choice. And then on the next two days, which were full days, half the kindergarten came and then the second day, the other half came. And when we got to Friday, it was a full day all. There were a lot of positives to that, except for the parents that had the first day didn't like the gap until they went all. So that was an issue, which we've been discussing. So another idea we had, and I would like to say, we want to, we thought we'd like this, but now we're rethinking it a little bit, that maybe the Tuesday and the Wednesdays would be half the class one day, half the class the other. Combine it with an open house, but have both days, a 1 o'clock dismissal because Tuesday already is. But for kindergarten, having that on Wednesday, so they're comparable. And then have full days Thursday, Friday. Since talking about it on Monday, there's been some conversation going on in emails that, well, we didn't think of this, we didn't think of that. So we're going to revisit this next week with the kindergarten steering committee and the principals on the 20th so that when we, I can let you know what the recommendation is before we even come into the next meeting. But the other part is that it actually goes to your comment about substitutes. One of the struggles we had this year, I should say in June, is getting adequate coverage so that the, the teachers and the people supporting them, specialists, we have enough subs to cover the, the days that we're going to do the screening. So I'm going to come up with a different model for how to do it next year, this, this coming June. But for the following June 18, we want to propose something to think about of having kindergarten end a day and a half earlier than the rest of the students.
So that they can screen.
And then do the screening in those two days. Now, there's disadvantages there in terms of families and after school care. And so one of the things we might do is talk to the after school as to whether they could accommodate them. That's going to be sketchy, I have to admit. And some schools have the space to do it and some schools don't.
They have an extra room, yeah.
So that, so I think what we will do is come back, you know, with the proposal for kindergarten. But the thing that kindergarten parents need to know for next year is that they will be starting school that first week. And what the model will be remains for a later time. But they'll probably know the end of this month.
I think, I mean, I think what, what works for teachers and administrators is the right call, but I think parents need to know as soon as possible.
No, I, yeah, I understand. Now, the last thing involves all of you.
Right.
When Karen put this on, there's a lot of conflicts with your pattern of second and fourth Thursdays for meetings. So what she did was basically put on what fit that pattern, Tuesday, second and fourth. And if there was a conflict, there's no school committee meeting. So it gives you the opportunity to decide what you want to do in the months where all these conflicts occur.
Right.
All right, so that's your job tonight.
So, so basically, we are required by our bylaws to have 20 meetings a year. There's only 16 on the calendar, so we have to find a way to add four. Now, we can cancel a meeting later on, we just have to put it on the calendar as a possibility. In my mind, I see an easy way to add two and a little less, but adding more is not as easy. Yeah, Dr. Allison Eppi?
We could add one on December 7th, like we did this year, so double that up.
Yeah.
And not go into the third week, which I think is just too hard.
So I think we do, I mean, we need two in December because that's our budget presentations.
Yeah.
One possibility that I was thinking is that we can do December 7th and 21st rather than the 14th.
I'm thinking that that last week gets more crazy.
Because of holiday stuff.
Because the holidays are coming.
Okay.
So that's why I'm thinking do seven and 14.
Seven and 14. Right. I mean, I think we absolutely need, so.
And then.
Then what about November?
Right, and so then November, and I think it was February. Still have only one. June has only one. And so we could add one, that's another easy add, to add one in June that might be canceled if, if we've decided that the business is concluded.
So I, we could do, we should definitely add it in February because there's always budget stuff that we can't seem to resolve anyway.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean, that, that seems to be an easy, it's either the first or the 15th, whatever people want.
I would say earlier is probably better, given the amount.
Well, the first, we have three in a row then.
Ugh, that's true.
Just pointing that out.
Think about it.
I think the 15th might be better for that reason.
Okay, well.
Mr. Slipman?
I, I would say that we should do our homework and come back the next meeting. We.
It's a first read.
Well, the first read, but we're throwing out ideas right now, we're not, we're not deciding it.
We've also got, in November, we, we don't hold a meeting if it conflicts with the annual MASC conference. I don't have the date for that.
Right.
And I just went on the website and I don't see the November date for, for that. So.
In November, we could do 16 and 30.
Remember that.
Yeah, these are placeholders, right?
Like, you know.
So remember, all we're doing is scheduling them.
Yeah, yeah, they're still placeholders.
Then when the MASC issue, you know, comes up, we cancel it.
I think we could find, I think we could find out when that is, you know, just with.
Yeah, I think November 16 and 30, that sounds, that.
But we also have, that's the month we do the superintendent's evaluation.
Yeah.
So we.
Right.
So we need to meet.
We usually, we've been able to streamline it in the past. The first time we did it under the new process, we gave the whole night and did, only took half the night. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, the rest of it, it's only taken about an hour.
Half of a meeting usually.
So, but it's something to remember.
So, okay, so I, I like the idea of the 16th and 30th in November. I think that's.
I know I have a conflict already on the 30th. That's a case conference.
Okay. And we know there's potentially going to be, right, right.
We could pass the budget that night, we'd let you know.
We'll do the evaluation that night. Well, we could do ninth and sixteenth then, for that, for November.
All right.
And I think an easy thing to add is the twenty-first of June, or do seventh and twenty-first.
Sure.
Because.
Seventh and twenty-first would work.
Seventh and twenty-first would work, and it would, yeah, then we don't have any double up. And then, if the twenty-first seems like we're done, then we.
Then we're done.
Then we're done. We have a party or something, yeah.
Okay, can, so September and October are as-is.
Yep.
You're saying November, the ninth and the sixteenth?
Yep.
In December, the seventh and fourteenth?
Yep.
Wait, what did we say in November?
Ninth and sixteenth?
I'm guessing that the ninth will be the conference.
Yeah, so we'll have to.
For Veterans Day?
Yeah, they will.
They'll avoid it, they'll push it up for earlier.
Well, let's, if they'll push it up, we'll hold on to it, huh?
I think, I think, well, for the public.
When was it this year?
It was early.
Yeah, it was before Veterans Day, so I'll bet it's going to be the second and third.
So, we can shift things around if we need to. So, this is just, these are placeholders, but they should be placeholders that make sense.
Okay.
So, November, ninth and sixteenth, December, seventh and fourteenth.
January's fine.
Yep.
And February, the fifteenth?
Yep, at the fifteenth.
At the fifteenth.
What about doing first and fifteenth?
In February?
Yeah.
So, we talked about that that would, oh, first and fifteenth would work. If it was, we were talking about first and eighth, that would be three meetings in a row.
Yeah, what if we just bump it?
I think that would work.
What do you mean bump it?
Oh.
So, change it around. So, do first and fifteenth rather than.
So, get rid of the eighth.
Eighth and fifteenth.
Do the first and the fifteenth. So, it's the first and the third Thursday instead of the second and the fourth.
It sort of feels like it'd be easier if it was in general the first and the third.
I know, right?
Right? And then that would be less problematic for us in the future.
It seems like all of those would work.
Send that to policy.
We can change the policy.
To look at the policy.
School vacations are always the third week of the.
Oh, that's why.
Whole week, and that's why.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, it doesn't work that way.
Right, if policy had it at nineteen, it would be easier.
If we need to, you can suspend a policy. You don't necessarily have to change a policy for one year for.
No, no, I know, I know, I know. I mean, we can, yeah, these are things that have to be on the calendar.
Schedule the twenty, and then cancel them if you have to.
And then in June.
When I first came on board, there was, I scheduled June meeting, two June meetings every year. And I think we only had one year, I didn't even think we had that idea.
Right, so in June, we're having the seventh and the twenty-first.
So, also moving those to the first and the third.
Also moving that instead of the fourteen, yeah. And so, that should get us to twenty, and we should all look at it and see if there's any other conflicts on second read. We'll have, maybe we'll move things around again, but we'll just sort of throw that as a proposal. So, when we head to second read, what else do we get? Do we start getting conferences dates at that point, or, no, not yet?
Take a longer, um, I, well, no, I don't think we'll have the, I don't think we'll have the early, well, we'll try on that, the early release dates. That may be a little soon, but maybe we can try for April, March or April this year to get the next piece of it done.
And I urge communication that, to ask principals to schedule things that don't conflict with school committee nights.
Yes.
If at all possible, yes.
The truth of the matter is, it's not sometimes the principals.
Yep.
It's, you know, it's music, or it's, you know, because they just schedule their concerts.
That happens as well, right, yeah, yeah.
But they have to go through the building, don't they have to go through the building principal to schedule the night?
Somebody must schedule.
Custodian.
Launch the schedule.
I mean, this year, I missed both the middle school and the high school, you know.
We'll put it out.
Sort of curriculum nights, so, yeah, nice to meet the teachers.
Right.
This is why it'll take a lot of time to figure out conference nights. Once we get the, we get the structure in here, then we can.
Yep.
Start putting all that in.
Okay, so we're going to do next read the next meeting.
Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, great. Okay, so we are about an hour off.
Well, yeah.
So, let's, so next on the agenda is discussion of the job description for the chief financial director. As is sort of hinted at tonight, Ms. Johnson is leaving us for another position, I think, February tenth.
That's her last day, yes.
It's her last day, so we are searching for a replacement. And we wanted to talk in this full school committee meeting about the description that was written, and sort of tweak it, or have just a discussion about it.
Right.
So, may I open that up to people who want to, Mr. Hayner?
The description that we got a copy of ended up having my edits on it, so.
Yeah, right.
I just want to let you know that first.
Yeah.
So, I'll start it. I'll start it.
Makes sense, but.
Down under necessary knowledge, skills, and abilities, I just suggested, in fact, I think it just said, it says be nice to everybody is what it was going to, and it left out the administrators, the school administration. And so, I suggested add school committee members or a statement just regarding administration, just to go along. Friendly thing. And then down further, under essential duties and responsibilities, the, on the second page, prepare monthly financial reports for school committees. That was left out. It just had principals and department heads. Down further, it talked about the budget presentations. It said bi-monthly, and does that mean once every two months, or does that mean every two weeks? I have no problem changing, I just want it more clear, that's all. Just.
Every two weeks.
Two meetings a month.
Well, I mean, I have no.
Or all regular.
You could just say it's regular school committee meetings, yeah, you don't have to be.
Maybe it should just, yeah, attend all regularly scheduled school.
Grammatically, it may be two meetings a month, but it lends itself to miss confusion. A little bit further down, it talked about, and other committees as needed. I just want to know who determines that needed. As a former president of a union, I, when it said as needed, I always said it was the teachers' need, not the administration's need, so just a little clarification there. And that's the only things that I've wanted things on.
Mr. Slickman.
Yeah, the other thing that I saw, and I pass this by our CFO in Lowell, the Massachusetts Association of Public Purchasing Officials certification is something you can only get as an incumbent, so that we should have it eligible for, or make it preferred, to have it a requirement.
As an incumbent, meaning you've already been a financial officer.
You have to be in, in the job in order to get that.
Okay, so that feels like unnecessary.
So, you can get that when you're in the job, and it's not, not that difficult to do, but you can't get it until you're an incumbent. You can't do that previous to taking a job. So, to have that as eligible for, or.
That restricts our field.
Yeah, restrict, we could potentially screen out people who we'd like to hire.
Mm-hmm, that's a good point. Ms. Darks.
I think, I'm not really sure how to do it, but one of the things I know that was a sticking point with Ms. Johnson, I want to be very clear about how many evening meetings every week, every month, we expect this person to go to. I do not think as needed is clear enough. I think that we need to, you know, there's going to be two school committee meetings a month that you're going to have to go to. You have to attend long-range planning, you have to attend all school building meetings, you have to, and really spell out exactly what that is, because I don't think.
Or give a range, expected range.
Exactly, you know, but something that we're going to hold to, because I feel like that is one thing that is not very clear in here. There's a lot of as needed, and I'm like, but we required her to go to all of those, and that was a lot of meetings, and we need to be clear.
Actually, I have, I sort of, in a way, had an opposite reaction to this. So, so like, what is our goal? Our goal is to accurately convey the job and get the best possible person we can get. And I worry that having such an incredibly detailed job description could scare somebody off. And I'd want to make sure that this job description is sort of in line with what other districts are doing. That I think, I just worry that it raises red flags if you have a job description that's so much more detailed than other districts are doing. And so, and I don't know the answer to that, but.
This has to be, I would hope that in the contract that we have, that it references job description.
But.
And if you don't have that clarity in it, and I don't, I think this, I don't see this as being, I defer to Rob on this.
I'd want to know what other districts are doing.
All our job descriptions, right down to our administrative clerks, are details on what their education, what their skill level is coming in, what their expectation of the job is. And usually, at the very end, and it says all other things that the superintendent wants.
Right, and we also want to build him some flexibility, so that if things shift around a little bit.
But that forms, the top administrator, the superintendent, if, you have all the detail that Ms. Darks just asked. The superintendent has the discretion at times to say, it's going to be a meeting that you don't need to come to tonight, and you can pass on it. But if it's clearly out there, the person has the expectation that they may be asked to come on this basis, there's no problems.
Right, okay, Dr. Allison Nampi.
Can you, Mr. Spiegel, explain what this job description will be used for? Is it the basis of the contract, or is it posted in the thing, or is it supplied to the candidate as they request it?
It would be in the posting, so it would, I would, usually, our job descriptions are posted either on School Spring or the other places where we would advertise this position. We would advertise a little more broadly in the Mass Municipal Association, Masbo, some other organizations, to broaden the search to people who are looking specifically for financial and municipal government jobs. In addition to just people who, School Spring is, really targets school jobs, we will post there, but we'll also post on the other places. So, we usually post this as the job description that is posted. It could be referenced in the contract as well. It can be something that is, obviously, once they're, the person, if we are successful in hiring someone, they have a copy of their job description. So, that's for all of those purposes, yes.
Do we have to post this for the job? I mean, I know we have to explain to the person what the requirements are, but does that have to be in the ad?
Right, it's posted to the contract, for example.
Right, I'm just, isn't there, you know.
It depends, I mean, some ads have, sometimes it has to be condensed, depending on some of the space restrictions or line restrictions in some places. I mean, in School Spring, I could post this whole thing. And it could be this whole copy and paste this whole job description into the School Spring posting, and they can see the whole thing. I mean, in other places, you can attach it. I mean, so it really just depends on if there are space limitations. But typically, I do post the job description.
If I may.
It really depends.
In the current contract approved by our attorney, it says, under duties, the chief financial officer's duties are fully, fully described in the job description in Appendix A, attached to and incorporated by reference into this agreement.
Okay, that's only one model, right?
But this, please, this is a standard boilerplate contract approved by our attorney, worked on very hard by Liz Valario. All I'm saying is that she is the one who agree, did this, and she is the one that supported the, I don't want to belate.
Mr. Slickman.
Yeah, you know, the thing is, is that in looking at job descriptions in school departments, some are very detailed and some are not.
Yeah.
And I think that's more a matter of institution and style than it is of having any consequence in people applying for a job, with the exception of if you're listing job require, you know, qualifications that are required that you can't fulfill. So that if you see a bunch of must-have this, must-do that, and you're missing one of those, people will drop out. But I don't think most people would be scared off by a more detailed description, it's just an element of district style. We've been served well by doing this, except that I think the points of calling out and being specific about the culture of the community and the number of night meetings we require because of the high level of citizen participation, is an important signal to place there so that somebody doesn't come to us six months later and say, gee, I didn't know that I'd have to go to all these meetings. Other than that, most of the stuff in here is pretty typical school business manager type stuff, and nobody should be surprised.
Okay. Mr. Stelman. Oh, sorry, yes.
I was going to say, I can, if you'd like, I mean, before, once you put in all of your inputs and suggestions for changes, I can send this to Liz for her review to make sure that she's okay with it, and would say that's fine to post as-is, and it's reasonable that it would be attached to a contract that would ultimately be entered into, which is what you said, Mr. Hayner, that it is, right?
It's in the document that she created in the last round of negotiation with our current CFO.
I would just hope that we'd be able to do this quickly, because I think we need to get this on the street as soon as possible.
Okay, Mr. Stelman.
Time is the essence.
So, a couple of things. Could you, I mean, Paul made a point about the Massachusetts Association of Public Purchasing Officials. Could you check, do you have to be a CFO to get that? Because I know there are people in the Boston, yeah, no, okay, but they have to be.
An incumbent.
An incumbent, meaning they have to be in a, in a public school district, in a business office.
That would be doing that kind of work, so that you could train for the position and get your credentials, your cert, your licensure.
Okay.
And have everything all set to go, but you can't get that till you get the job.
All right, got it, so.
Yeah, I'll change that to eligible for.
Eligible, yeah, okay. So, the next point I want to make is this, and so I, this has been said, but I just want to say it again. It is important to be as specific as possible in here about the number of night meetings. So, when, you know, in different organizations, when you hire people, sometimes you're very specific. Fifty percent of your time is going to be traveling. And it's just best to state upfront, fifty percent of the time, you're going to be traveling to out-of-state by plane. And you tell applicants that, and they know it, and they either buy it, they're into it, or they're not. And some, you know, in the organization I had, I, you know, I tell them, you're going to be traveling to Manchester, Lowell, Boston, and Lynn. And, you know, I actually have them actually do that, and experience going to those offices. They're finalists for a major job, because I want them to, because they can't, they're not going to be into it, and it's going to be too much. We just need to know that right away, so we don't waste each other's time. So, I think the more specific you are about the number of meetings, and I would get the number from Diane, I'd put it in there. Generally speaking, you know, typically, during the, during the school year, from September to June, the expectation is that you're going to have X number of night meetings per month, whatever that number is. And it's right upfront, it's right there in the job description, the applicants know it. And they apply or not based on that reality and their own personal situation.
Mr. Carden.
So, I want to ask, just, or just raise a sort of a broader issue. And, you know, every time we have a high-level position turnover, I think we should take a look at, do we really want to keep things exactly as they are, or is there perhaps some other model or type of person that we're looking for in light of this opening? So, you know, the one thing that I know that Dr. Bodie has been burdened by, as I've watched her, sort of administrative duties, and her educational leadership, I think, has suffered to some extent, because there is nobody else to take off some of the administrative duties. So, I do wonder, you know, certainly the other model that you see is a chief administrative officer that is also the chief budget officer. So, I just hope, you know, we don't have much time, but I just wondered, didn't know if you've given any consideration into at least highlighting some, or give some other administrative duties that this person could have in addition to just running the business office.
The answer is yes. I actually spent a lot of time thinking about this. In fact, I've also done surveys of all of our lab partners to see what their business offices look like. And the one thing I can say is that they're all different. And so, then tried to look at functionality, because one of the things that we questioned was whether we would go forward and hire the accountant position. That position has always been in the district, it's had different people over time, and it's been called different things. Essentially, that is the role. But given Ms. Johnson's departure, and that this job will be posted for June, for July one or sooner, having that person in the position is going to be important. But I totally agree with you. What can we do? For example, I mean, certainly, there's issues around project management as we go forward. And I think that's something that Tom Manager and I have talked about as well, because there are levels of project management. And we are in a great shape in terms of having all these projects, but they have taken, they take a lot. but they have taken, they take a lot of time. And so, yes. But the thing about the permanent town building is that that is suggested, and maybe to your point, we may, maybe be a little bit more explicit about building projects, for sure. And in fact, one of the reasons why we put, this wasn't in the original job description, the MAPO, is that the person, one person who sits on the high school building committee has to have that certification. And there are three people in this town that have it. So the CFO is one of them. So that's an issue that we have to cover.
Mr. Ex.
I noticed there's nothing in here that says that they will help with negotiations. And I think that they, she plays a vital, they play a vital role in that. I'm actually looking at the Lawrence Public Schools CFO, and theirs is at least a page longer than ours. So they are very detailed about what they are supposed to do. Some other towns I look at, and they're more general, but this one in particular has a lot of very specific pieces. But some of them are like, you know, we'll make sure that technology is used in their department to increase productivity and, you know, be the leader of that for their, you know, I mean, we don't have stuff like that. So I don't know. I mean, I agree with Mr. Carden that this is the time. I know we feel like we don't have the time to do this, but if we don't do it now and really fill this out with what we really expect this person to do, I think we end up not being clear in what, in what, what the job really entails.
Well, I mean, you also have the possibility of something changing later, if we think that the candidate has the right qualifications and the right, you know, I mean, it could be that the position evolves.
There is a line in there on providing management support in the areas of human resources and contract negotiations. I don't know if you want that more explicit. The other thing, I just want to respond a little bit to Mr. Carden's point. I also looked a lot at titles, and to Dr. Bodie's point, offices are all different, titles are all different. CFO is a title that's referenced in a lot of our policies, because it's been a long-term title here. It's a different title in other districts where they have director of financial operations or director of financial services, or in some districts, they're assistant superintendents for finance. So it's all different. I think because of the way it's referenced in our policies and our history, keeping it as chief financial officer, and I put in parentheses, school business administrator, because I just want people to know, that's the license we're looking for. That's the, you know, they have to have that to do this job.
Yeah, Dr. Ready.
We have spent actually a fair amount of time looking at job descriptions. And one of the things that was clear in this survey, certainly our colleagues, is that the, our position is unique in some respects, in that we now have a town facilities department. In some districts, they oversee all facilities. In some districts, they oversee payroll. We don't do that. We have a town school payroll system. So it's, the scope is different, really. And, but I do think having some language in there, I should probably go back and double-check, to covering the clarity, even though they're not going to be taking the role of a director of facilities, there still has to be a strong facilities involvement in this.
But even, I think that that exactly is why it all has to be spelled out, because every single one of these is different. And so people have to read this and understand.
The uniqueness of this.
Uniqueness, and, you know, I mean, you know, it can't, I know we don't want, we don't put in there what they don't have to do. That's something that has to come out in the, you know, interviewing process. But, you know, I think it's very important then that this is as specific as possible, so people understand.
Mr. Hayner.
The piece that you were just talking to, Dr. Bodie, the attendance of the, at the permanent town building committee may be met by that if it's, goes all the time. In other words, not just when there's school-related projects there. So they'd be aware of all the facilities and the ramifications of that throughout the town. I don't know. That, that part, I think, when it says permanent town building committee, should belong to your purview of when they do or don't come. The other thing I'd just like to say, I don't know how effectively, but we did survive as a school department for 60 days without Ms. Johnson. So, I mean, you know better how the bumps and grinds than what that, that aspect of it. But to go to the idea of rushing into this, I think it's important, we take sufficient time to make it clear so we can avoid the bumps that we had over the past year, year and a half. That's all.
Mr. Schlichtman.
I mean, we could, if, I would favor putting something out quickly to bring in candidates. If we start looking, and the candidates we get will inform whether we've written the job description correctly or not. I don't think that we should be spending a lot of time right now trying to tweak it without the benefit of the data of the candidates that would respond to the search. And if we're getting somebody who's highly qualified and can step in and do a great job for us, based on this job description, we had a winning job description. But if we think that we want to throw, to open the pool again and see if we could get a different candidate than we get in our first line of responses, then we go back and take a hard look at what was blocking us from getting the people we wanted in the first round. So we can always pull, we can always stop the search, we can always pull the posting, we could always repost. But I don't think that we should take a lot of time going around in circles and trying to edit it. At this point, I want to see who's out there, and I want, and the longer we wait, the greater the chance that somebody we like is going to go take a job in another district.
Okay. Climate discussion going on for, Dr. Allison Napi?
We can always update, right, as long as it's before they sign it, and they see it, and they agree. We're not, there's no.
You can update it on School Spring once it's posted.
Yep.
Yeah, but I mean, even, even when we're starting to talk to them, we can say, we've gone over this, and we realize this needs to be changed, here it is, and either say.
All right, Mr. Hayner, quick.
I would, if a motion is appropriate, move that we go forward, asking Mr. Spiegel to take the minor edits that we put in tonight and present it to Liz Valerio, council. And if it's appropriate, would that document go forward or bring it back to us at the next meeting, either way?
Okay. Do we feel we need a motion on this? Is that?
I just have one question for, yes, I'm going to vote yes on this.
Does this make sense if we put a motion out?
Kathy, want to say something?
Yeah.
Just as a point of clarification, I think the motion needs to be specific. I think the motion would be to authorize the, the.
Human resources.
Authorize the superintendent, she's the person responsible for everything anyway. Authorize the superintendent to make revisions based on this conversation, review the document with, with council, and upon approval of council, advertise the position. That would be the motion.
I'd second.
Did you want to say?
I agree with that. One of our, one of our hurries on that is we do know there's some other sources going on.
Get out there quickly. Okay, okay. So motion on table made by Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Hayner. All in favor of the motion on the table?
Aye.
Aye, say, five say aye. Aye. Apposition is unanimous.
I just have one question. Have you been kind of recruiting candidates? I mean, this has been coming for some time. So have you been putting the word out?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. Okay, good. I mean, I just wanted to hear that. I assume you were, but I wanted to hear that.
But, on the other hand.
I know the market's.
I tried to do that with an interim, and there's not many people.
Yeah, yep.
If there are any potential CFOs out there watching this.
Just call us.
The answer is yes.
Wonderful place to work.
You've got some great school committee members here who will support your work and efforts.
Yeah. The one thing that is different here is the number of night meetings. I will say that while some job descriptions are much more robust in terms of facilities payroll, but when I talk about night meetings, hardly any, other than maybe school committee.
Right.
And that's an issue.
And that's a big difference.
And in cities, people coming from cities, even more so.
Right.
So they need to understand.
Yes, it's a different, it's a different kind of job than, and so that's, it's important.
So we have the benefits of the facilities and the payroll that they don't have to deal with, but we have the other thing, which is that there's a lot of night meetings.
I'd venture to guess that in the cities, they have assistants to go to those meetings. And in the smaller communities, they may even have other staff that they do it to.
They may have fewer meetings.
It won't be in the top person's job.
There's no town meeting. All right, so we are now more than an hour over, so let's move on to superintendent's report.
Should we move the 10 o'clock move?
No. Not yet, I think we can get it.
It's 9:15.
I think we can get it, but let's.
Just saying that, get Cindy Matty.
The first thing, let me give you a quick overview of where we're going with some of these, the building projects. Starting with Stratton, things are going well. We're staying to the timeline. Nobody sees any, any issues there. And in fact, there will be some, a fair amount of contingency money that will probably not need to be used, because we're beyond the point of some of the big surprises. So we're in good shape there.
Okay. Does that mean less money that the taxpayers have to fork over in the end? Is that?
No, don't go there yet.
And just, is that what that means? I mean.
The answer is yes and no. Because keep in mind, we have other projects going on simultaneously that are not being handled by MSBA.
Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, okay, okay.
So one of them is Thompson. And there's a, there is a little worry on the timeline at Thompson. I'll have to be honest on that. But things are moving along. There were, there were some permitting issues in the beginning, and then there were some drainage issues that had to be remedied. But I went over and actually personally met with the, our owner's project manager to go over all of the schematics. And I think that we're going to be seeing steel going up sometime in early February. And hopefully, we don't have 36 inches of snow while that's, while that's going. But, but they do have a plan. I've talked with the architect also, that they feel confident that the plan still has this opening with no problems in September.
Okay.
Cool. That's two.
That's two, okay.
Gibbs.
Gibbs. Gibbs, Gibbs is going along well. Though I have to say, it took longer to figure out some of the floor plans, because the building, well, it's going to be adequate more, it's going to be adequate. It still is constrained in terms of getting all of our programs in the building, because there are special education programs, there, you, you, you're aware of all of the curriculum kinds of programs we have at the middle school. And of course, we're definitely dedicated to our music, our art, and so there's a lot, ELL. And so it took a little bit longer than we anticipated figuring out floor plans. I would have loved to have been able to have you have the presentation tonight, but we're, but I don't have the presentation yet. But as soon as I get it, I'll give it to you. I mean, certainly ahead of when we are going to go out for some, some further comment. And I would hope that you would give some comments on this. I will tell you, though, that a lot of thought has gone into it, is involved everybody here, and also curriculum leaders, making sure that all their needs were adequately met.
And the public meeting is?
The public meeting is going to be this coming Tuesday. The, this week was picked because it worked, and it also is permanent town building. And it works to have all of them on the same day. So we're going to have, over at Odison in the afternoon at 3:30, we're going to have a voluntary meeting of teachers who would like to come and see the plans, ask questions, give comments. The same thing for parents, starting at 6 o'clock. And then we've been, we're going to be a little bit later on the agenda for permanent town building, so we'll then be going to permanent town building. So we want to, if there's any comments or things that need to be tweaked, this is the time to do it, because the plans really do need to be finalized by the end of January.
So this is Thursday, January 17th, at 6 o'clock in Odison.
At 6 o'clock at Odison. So it's 6 o'clock. I sent out a notice to parents. And I will remind parents on Monday, and then hopefully people will be able to come. But the thing I also said is that if you can't come, and it's understandable, it's not obviously the most ideal time. But 7 o'clock is not necessarily ideal for families either. There's pros and cons to any kind of evening time. All of these documents are going to be on the website, and included the URL for that. Already, there are a number of documents up there that people can take a look at. So that's happening. Also selected the advisory committee. There was actually a fair amount of interest in this, as you probably could imagine. So actually, I've sort of taken a risky, risky move, and what I decided to do is to have a representative from each school.
Okay.
But when we bring in teachers, it's a fairly large committee, so I talked to the architect about it the other day, and.
So a community representative from each school?
Yes, elementary school.
And is that chosen by town council, or by, each school is doing their own?
No, I had, I had already put in motion, I had them, and I looked at people's, different things that they brought to the table. It's, I will be the first to admit that there's probably not an applicant that sent their interest, their expression of interest, that would not have been a great member.
Have they been notified yet?
Yes, they have been notified. And in fact, in a couple of cases, I've asked them if they would, if we had a subcommittee and their expertise, would they be willing to serve? If we could have had the whole, you know, a much, much larger, but it gets a certain sense of workability. Plus, we have teachers, too. We don't want to have this totally unbalanced either. And we've talked a little bit about this as well. But there are a lot of things that will be, there's one advantage of having more parents on this, is the teachers are going to be going into planning sessions, and there's going to be a lot of issues that we need to think about. You know, recess, for example, is one example. And then there's also the playground and the gardens and, and all of, and all of that. I mean, there's quite a good list. But there will be some, it'll be nice to have a touchstone of parents who we can run some ideas off of, too, which is exactly what the point of the advisory committee is, to present, give us some feedback. So that is going forward. It is not going to be a regular meeting. It's really as needed, because there's, you know, there's maybe concentrated in a one period of time, and then there might be a big lull. So it really depends on where the architects are in the process, as to how often this committee will meet. But that's already in motion. So I think we're in a good place there, and there's a lot of cost estimates going on.
Hardy.
Wait, I'm still, I'm quite upset that we are not getting to see those before everyone else. Like, that we have been left off, that you're meeting with teachers, you're meeting with parents, and no school committee. We didn't get it tonight. We don't get a presentation. I know, but then, then the whole thing should have been pushed off. It's really embarrassing when things happen in the schools, and we're not the first to know. Because we're the first people that other people call to complain, to ask. And when we're not the first people to get stuff, it looks really bad. When I have to pick up the phone and go, you know, I don't know. I don't have any information on that.
I hear what you're saying, and I will get, as soon as I have the presentation, I will send it to you. I just don't have it yet.
Okay.
I, the thing is, it's the, it's the timeframe of trying to stay aligned to making sure everything's going. I've been told that they have to finish, finish this by the end of January. I think originally, this would have worked a lot better if we didn't have to have the amount of time that was spent in December, sort of going over every square foot of the, of the building.
So this is going to be on the agenda for our next meeting in January?
Yes.
Right? So that we can at least officially give some feedback and hear what, what happened.
And so, and the expectation is that we will get the documents before this public meeting. And so, and the expectation is that we will get the documents before this public meeting on Tuesday.
I will get, try to get those documents to you. I will make, I will contact our architect about that. I think that there's going to be a lot of input needed from the school committee as we go forward in a number of areas. I'm not sure that getting into the weeds of square footage for a particular room is, you know, you want to know what it's gonna look like, but I'm not sure that, that's the kind of input you need to give. But once we get the floor plans done, then there's gonna be a whole lot of other things as we go forward. I mean, there's gonna be the whole issue of buses, for example. I mean, that's just one of many. And, you know, another issue that we have to really look at is, do we need to keep, you know, and we're certainly happy to have your input into this too, do we need to have the middle school, the, the sixth grade schedule lockstep with a schedule toward the eighth, seventh and eighth? On the other hand, it can help with split personnel, but on the other hand, the whole idea was to be able to think out of the box a little bit more about what the sixth grade experience could be. So I think we're gonna have to have more, more discussion about that. That is, that, there's a lot, there's a lot.
He's wrestling with a package.
But in terms of the square footage piece, I think the biggest issue, actually, I'm not sure. It's, because some of the stuff will still need to be decided later. Right now, it's just like, they have to be able to get the construction drawings done.
Right.
That's what it's all about. That's what this push is about. I think one of the biggest issues, but it came, but it, the, the forums sort of shifted the thinking on where the, the main entrance was going to be to the, the school.
Okay.
One of the things that came out in the forums, particularly the parameters, is, you know, you want to have something that's open and inviting. And, yeah, warm tells you who the, what the school is. Well, if you have the tough street side, that's not gonna happen. It's very cramped, narrow. So the decision was made to shift it out to the, on the Foster Street side. So that's where it's going to be. Now, there's, there's, there's still a lot to be thought of, but they just have to get these construction drawings because then you gotta be able to go out to bid. So we're just trying to stick to this very tight time scale, timeline, I should say.
Can you speak to the timeline for the principal search, that Gibbs?
Well, as, as I've said before, I would like to, I would like to see someone that was internal for a number of reasons. One is that we'd love to have that person part of the planning process, and that's an important one. But honestly, another one, which I think is even, maybe even more important, and that is, when you hire a, a new principal, the first year, there's a lot of mentoring and, and, and time for a person to sort of get entry plan, you know, get to know the teachers. And I think that because this experiment that we're doing, and I think it's a very good one, I think we need to have someone there that, that stuff's behind them. It could be anyone, any, a lot of our administrators could be assistant principals, principals, even some curriculum leaders perhaps. That that, that, that piece is behind, that the mentoring is actually before the year starts, not during the year. Because I really think it's gonna be important to have someone that's so focused on all the unique issues of starting a brand-new school with a, with a, that we're trying to create. So that's actually the main reason. And then there's also the whole financial piece. I mean, you, you can't hire a person a year out from, given our financial situation. I mean, that's just not even in the realm of possibilities. So, but at any rate, they need, the, the curriculum work, we haven't even done the grant yet. So there's a little bit less pressure to get moving on that right this minute, because as you know, we've got to do the CFO.
Right.
And we have to do, we have to get started with the Odison. That needs to get going. And the plan was really to get out there, and, and actually, there's only so much bandwidth to do all this, to do all this.
So that's a reasoning for the internal search, but also, do you know what the current timing thought process is for doing that search?
This spring, either in the early part of the spring, because we'd love to have the person available for the kind of work that we're anticipating doing during the summer.
So we, we hopefully should know who this person is this year, in June.
It's just that, right now, I think it's more important to get the CFO going, and it's also the, the Odison search.
So I, I actually just wanted to speak, I've, I've gotten a couple of responses from the community saying that, that if we do not do an external search, we are potentially losing an opportunity to increase our diversity of our staff. And I, I want to push back against that assumption. I think that we are going to be doing several searches. We're doing a CFO search. We'll be doing Odison search. If we hire internally, we'll be doing a search to replace that person.
Yes.
And that those are all great opportunities to look far and wide as best as we can for as diverse, you know, to increase diversity, which is a goal of the school committee. It's a goal of the administration. And that, that focusing so laser-like on one particular position is sort of, that misses the big picture of what we're looking to do as a district, where we are looking to make additional hires, and we have opportunities to make diverse hires if possible. I ask to encourage anyone, if you know of people, because oftentimes, people are attracted to the district through personal connections. You know, please spread the word. We are a great district to work for, and, and we are, we value a diverse staff.
Dr. Boddy, regarding Gibbs and internal, do we have, do we, we're aware, we have available to us all the people that are certified for that position, don't we? You have that?
We, yeah, I can.
I mean, if they've said it, if they, if they put it in their records, I mean.
Well, and I have access to anyone's certification who works in the district who's a certified employee. So I can check anyone's certification, and we can, no, I mean, it really has, it's.
But.
I'm just, I'm, I'm just, I mean, if the search is internal, I just want to make it expansive internal as well.
Well, I think people have to request that their name be considered, right? They can't, we.
It's still a formal process.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me, let me just say this, though, on this piece, because I've actually talked to a fair number of superintendents. It, it is totally, first of all, it's all totally my prerogative to appoint someone.
Yes.
And actually, that's done a fair amount in school districts. And I actually lean toward that and just privately talk to people. And kind of frankly, a lot of the controversy about this, I, I, it may, may suggest that we do that. But I wanted people to have the opportunity to, to apply and to have a chance to talk about their thinking and their philosophy in a, as we would do with anything. But I, I thought that was a fair thing to do for people who wanted to, to do it, and I knew that there were several people who were interested. But that is actually not how it's often done in other districts. It's just not. And it's, you just move, it's, it's just like a teacher. You can move, you know, of a need. We have a lot of district positions. We move them from school to school. When we hire a principal, it is in their contract that they can be appointed to any other school in the district. That's in their contract. There's no reason why you can't do that. And frankly, maybe that's what's gonna end up happening. But I still want to invite, have all the people who are interested to have an opportunity to talk about this. And I don't, I don't want to cut off the opportunity.
Mr. Speaker.
The other thing, we are, we, we were also talking about the job description for that position. Because while it would be very similar to the job description for the Odison principal position, it is a new position in the district. We haven't had a sixth-grade-only building. And so we would, I think we're working on just drafting that. It really, it's very similar to what we have for the Odison already, but it is sort of a, a little bit different.
Wait, let me get Dr. Elson Apie first.
About this, about the suggestion that we've heard from outside about targeting the search, is that even legal? I mean, to try and target a search to increase diversity?
No, no one's saying that. No one's saying that. They're just saying, they're saying.
I'm not saying we're, I'm not saying we're saying that.
No, no, they're not saying that either. They're not saying that.
There are, there are.
No one said that, that I've seen, that I've seen, yeah.
So I think what the point is, if we, if, if we search externally, we don't know necessarily who are the available pool is. And we would advertise broadly to include any qualified licensed applicant. And, and we do have a goal, which many school districts have a goal, of increasing the diversity of our professional staff in the district. That's not a secret. With the limits we have with our current professional staff, administrative staff, I mean, that's where it, it limits the, the pool a little bit. That's, I think that's the point.
Yeah, that's the claim.
But I don't think it's, we wouldn't be only targeting.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything else.
I'm, okay. I'm not gonna get into which one it is. I'd just like to know the answer because I want to shut down one of conversa, one of the side things that has been coming to us. So I'm, I'm assuming it's not legal to target a search based on.
We certainly could not limit a search to one racial, ethnic, religious group. We couldn't say only these people can apply. We would target everyone. If we're, but we can limit a search, we can limit a search to internal candidates and prefer internal candidates, or just do an internal search.
No, 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 I'm not questioning about the internal search. It's, the, the first bid is what I thought.
Actually, that, that raises a question. Do we have those standard lines where an equal opportunity employer down and everything? So that, that's, we have that. I was just curious. Okay.
I just want to make it clear. I have seen nothing coming to me, as an individual member of this committee, that the issue that I have been getting is to, the, the difference between internal and external search. There may have been rationale to do an external search, but the, the main premise was to, to do an external, an all-encompassing external search. But the prerogative does belong to the school district and the superintendent to do everything she has said today under the law.
And I, I just want to point out, this is not the only search that we are making in the district. So, you know, I mean, that, that we have positions, there'll be other opportunities for, to fill positions that we will be searching wide and far.
We just had a vacancy come up this week for a special education teacher at the Odison Middle School, if anyone knows. If you're interested in being a special education teacher at the Odison Middle School, let me know.
And of course, we need substitutes.
That's not gonna happen.
And we definitely, we always need substitutes.
We always need substitutes. Hey, I got, I, I've helped out a little bit there.
All right, so much for the Gibbs.
All right, so the Gibbs, yes.
And high school. Oh, Hardy. Hardy, yes, we, we had a proposal from, for the School Enrollment Task Force. We already talked about this. And we're now at the point of trying to figure out what is the, the correct amount that would be necessary. And I actually had a, a long conversation with the architect earlier today, in fact. And to look at really what are the soft costs. The thing about when you do small projects, the soft costs are, are higher than what they are in a usual standard industry. So when you do, I've learned a lot about this. So you do your, your range for your square foot, but then you tack on twenty percent. The fact of the matter is, in small projects, it's higher. So we're, the town manager and I have been, had some discussion about this. But one of the other things, but soft costs include.
Furniture.
Furniture, the, the project manager, architectural fees, all of that. The, the per square foot is our construction cost.
Right, right.
But one of the other things that came up with Hardy, which I think is something that we will discuss at some point, and that is whether the cafeteria is adequate. Again, it goes back to that common space issue. So I have a, a couple of scenarios which are gonna be costed out. And, and then it's a question of a, you know, is that something that we, we think we should do, so.
So have there, has there been a vote at the School Enrollment Task Force about one of the plans, or?
It was a recommendation for a sixth classroom addition at Hardy, permanent construction.
We recommend a sixth classroom addition contingent upon the town manager and the superintendent meeting to determine financing.
Financing of it. And, and there was also the issue of taking a look at auxiliary areas, too.
Motion by Mr. Foskett, second by me.
Okay, okay. So, so that's.
That's done.
Done, okay.
We're done. We're moving forward on the cost piece.
Charlie and I are gonna start building next week. Just gonna dig. Do it.
So, we're now into the high school.
High school.
High school. We're, we're moving forward. We don't have a new number yet. We're working with MSBA. There's been more communication this week, but we're not.
Enrollment number.
Enrollment number for the high school, the design enrollment number. And as soon as I know more, I'll let you know. But I did find something out this week that, you know, hopefully, we're gonna move this forward fairly quickly because this year, they've canceled a number of their board meetings. And now they're gonna have a February board meeting and a May.
So we have to go on February.
So we really need to, so, so I think that's our collective goal, is to try to get to that February once we can move this forward.
And so just to clarify, I know we, there are a number of things we had to do in a hundred and eighty days. I understand we've done all those things, but there's still that final thing about the number, the size, okay.
Our eligibility period actually goes to March. I mean, so we're not at the edge of that. It's more the, the edge of when we need to get moving so we can be on the February.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Okay.
So that's where we are. I'm gonna let Dr. Cheston talk a little bit, but just prefacing here, one of the things we wanted to talk about is the dashboard.
Yes.
And just like we have constraints of buildings, we have constraints of our website in terms of what it, what can be managed on it. So there's been a lot of work that, to create some graphics about some of the key things people want to know about. We're getting it up. It's, it's, it's still a work in progress. We'll be continuing to add to it. But I think one of the things that came up in the recent discussions, and I'll, I'll let Laura talk more about it, and that is that we should also create some links to information rather than trying to replicate it on our website. And that's the direction we're going. This was, this is already up on the website now, and we have three spots that you can locate. So I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay.
Sure. So one of the things is that we're trying to, as my technology person tells me, we're trying to get a filet mignon with a hot dog budget, or a hot dog tool. So we have some good information. I think it's information that people will enjoy taking a look at, but it's not as interactive perhaps as we would hope to have. So Claudia added this to the district website, oh, sorry.
Claudia added this to the district website this week. So if people at home go under, I'll go back to home, under the quick links, you'll see the district dashboard there. If you go into administration, you'll see the district dashboard there. And there's a third place that I just, for some reason, can't remember where it is. And if people choose to go to that, so there's an introduction to the dashboard. There are a number of charts on enrollment, and then I will page down so you can see those.
It's right here. District dashboard, quick link.
Yep, on the quick links on the left-hand side. So there's a number of enrollment charts that are out there. There are a number of budget charts, which will probably look familiar to many people that are underneath there. And then this is what Dr. Boddy was just alluding to. So student outcomes. Most of the data that we present in student outcomes is actually available through the Department of Education website under the school and district profiles, under the assessment portion, and out of the, under accountability portion. So probably next week, when you click on this, instead of getting the message that this is currently under development, you'll actually get transferred to the Department of Education website to those portions of the school and district profile that have that information. And they are all pretty interactive. So there will be, you know, you will get a direct connection, so someone won't have to remember what the Department of Education website is and where you go and stuff like that.
To Arlington's.
Yes, there'll be a direct link to Arlington. The same thing with staffing. That also, there's also a great deal of staffing information that's available through the Department of Education website, and that will be, also be put up there. And then technology will bring you to a number of charts that you've actually seen earlier over the last year or so that have to do with technology and how many pieces of technology and bandwidth and stuff like that. So that, that's what our goal is, but these.
Can we have a link to the technology plan?
Uh, that's actually already on the site underneath the departments, I believe.
I was just wondering if you, it might be helpful to have a link here.
Yeah, but we could have a crosslink. Yes, absolutely. Sure, sure.
The, the stats on Desi on, as far as staffing, something, it's just a number. Just a blank, it says, it'll say the Arlington School Department, elementary, boom, or by the school.
It also talks about the percentage of teachers that are highly qualified, the percentage of teachers that are teaching in their subject area.
The people that have asked me questions about, they're asking about some of its salaries, which I, I think it's really good to show that we're not competitive with the other communities and stuff like that.
A comparison of our salaries, yeah.
A comparison salary thing. I mean, beginning and start, I'm not looking for Dr. Bod, or Teacher Ray and such. Teacher Ray and such, such.
Right, the average salary compared to other districts.
But also do comparisons of other schools and stuff like that.
So those are things we could add over time. But again, they would be static charts. One of the things that, that we had gotten original feedback on was that folks wanted to be able to sort of like roll over a graph and see what the data point is that's associated with that. And we just don't have the tools that are available to do that. And we have one person who's supporting 10 schools and doing nine other things in this, so.
But it could be an opportunity to link to other things that are produced. So, actually, on budget information, I can see a lot of things that we could be linking to potentially there.
Other budget presentations that we have in.
So we have some graphs, but then we have some links there. Just an easy way to get to them.
Absolutely, absolutely. So there would be one place where people could go for specific information.
Right, right.
So that's where we stand now. And I expect that over the next three or four months, you'll continue to see things added, and we'll bring those to your attention as we add them.
Okay, so we have 80 percent, 70 percent developed now. We have another couple of weeks, we'll have even more.
Yeah, I think it's probably more like 60 because we have enrollment and we have budget. Student outcomes will come fairly quickly.
Yep.
The staffing information that Mr. Hayner talked about will probably, I'll have to create those charts, and there will be a static link of PDF charts. And technology, the technology plan, we already have that. We're in the process of updating it. I've already set up meetings with a number of teachers at a couple of different schools to get feedback. And we'll be having a parent meeting is where we get, people will have opportunity to give feedback as part of the work we're gonna be doing with Vision 2020. That was originally scheduled for January, and then given the weather, they thought better, and we pushed it out to March. So there will be a joint meeting sponsored by Vision 2020 and the Curriculum and Instruction Department to talk about what we envision for schools. And one of those places will be for parents to give us feedback about technology.
And I should just ask a question about that. Is that the same thing as the technology showcase?
I have to discuss that with AEF, whether they still want us to do a separate one or that they'll put it together.
Or this will be merged in and do one. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, any, wait, any questions, comments about dashboard before anything else? Okay, great, thanks.
Have a few things.
Yes, and more from Dr. Boddy?
I will, I'm trying to come really fast.
Okay.
Actually, before, I'm gonna start at the top of the list. It's Danielle Rad, who is a science teacher in the high school. We will, there'll be an information in my newsletter more about it, but I really do want to acknowledge the fact that the American Association for the Advancement of Science featured her as the teacher of the month for all of her very creative, innovative work. And I have to say, her courses, people can't get into them. They're so popular. So I want to congratulate Danielle for this, this great honor. Tonight, we had, I just briefly was able to get down there. They had students who've been in the internship program do a display of their learnings and what their projects were for, and this year, we've done it differently. In the past, people sort of sat in an audience and they gave a presentation, which actually I sort of liked. But when you have now 40 students, it becomes a little bit more difficult. And, but they, they set it up like we've done the math fair, in which people could go around and circulate, and they had to get so many tags of people that they gave their presentations. Because one of the things that we do want to have in this is students have the opportunity to present, explain. And there was really, the range of projects was so interesting, from computer geeks, kinds of things, technical. We have one student who's been working with the Computer Cafe, and she does hard drive transfers. And we had the food bank, we've had people work within the athletic department, engineering department. It was a wide range. And of course, one of our efforts in this program is to get more placements for our students. So we have 40 this year, and we're hoping to grow it at least another 20 next year.
And actually, I, we've talked about having a presentation at school committee, which I hope we can work out this year.
I'm sure we can.
Dr. Jenga, with then maybe some exemplars of the things that students are doing.
Yep, let me, I'm sure that we can do that. It's a great opportunity for the students, and then you can hear what they're doing.
Yeah.
See, from our, our vantage point, this is, you've heard a lot, what was going on with world language. It's, students learn by doing, and they learn, that the one thing that came through when I would ask students what they learned, they learned about themselves. They learned about the skills they had. They learned whether they liked it. And one person said, I don't think I'd ever go into this field now. But others said, yes. So it, it's an opportunity just to learn outside the walls of a school. Last night, I went to frozen Fenway. We were invited, Arlington and Burlington played. We were invited to come and play on the ice of the Fenway, and it was a lot of fun. You know, if, if the number of people that were there were in our rink, it would be overflowing. In Fenway, it felt like sprinkles everywhere. But it was a lot of fun. Our students did well.
It was a warm night.
Huh?
It was a good night?
Yeah, it was a perfect night. I was thinking about this on Sunday.
Yeah.
But it was a lovely night out there, and they did well. And, but as the superintendent in Burlington said, this is, this game is about friendship and fun, and that's what it was. So we also were invited on Sunday to the garden. Our girl basketball team played Belmont. And again, that was a great experience for them. Speaking of storms, the mention of storms came up. We did have a surprise storm, and it brings up, and I say this, maybe we'll say it every meeting we have, that if, if parents feel that it's unsafe to go out in weather, certain weather conditions, what they, all they need to do is to call the school and say, you know, my child cannot be there because I don't feel it's safe conditions for them to walk or for me to drive. Well, it will be counted as an absence, it is an excused absence. Because you have two types, excused and unexcused. You don't want to be any unexcused. So it's fine. But there's sometimes, that was a big surprise. Hopefully, we won't have any more of those this year. We'll see. That is it.
Okay, great. So I think it is possible we have to push the timing of this.
Consent agenda.
Can I read this? Because I didn't get a copy. Okay, so we'll do the consent agenda quickly. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and be enacted with one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of those items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Approval of warrant, warrant number 17098 dated 12/15/2016. Total warrant account $532,685.58. Approval of minutes, school committee regular meeting December 15th, 2016. So moved by Ms. Starks.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Stillman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous? Okay. This is something we have to get done tonight. Mr. Hayner, do you want to give a quick description of the recycling stuff?
My machine just crashed. If you can call up the policy. We have been in a position, we thought this was already done, and we had already done it. We have not done it. So the, there is a grant that we're involved in, and they, they need to have a school committee policy in place before they can get the grant. So basically.
So we're waiving the two reeds.
Yeah, yeah, we want to vote on it tonight if possible.
So moves.
So.
Second. It's pretty straightforward. I mean.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. Mr. Stillman, second bid by Mr. Slifman. Any discussion? No. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any aye? Any opposition? Okay, that's unanimous.
And if I may, do we want to discuss, I sent you folks a copy of the emails that I got from other districts. You would ask for that. Do you want to do that now, or do you want to do it under policy?
Uh.
Guiding MASCs.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll do it under policy.
Let's do it under policy. Okay, so actually, I want to make a quick comment, and I'm very bad at this, too, but if anybody has subcommittee minutes to send, I haven't seen them in a while, so just send them for the next meeting to Karen.
I do.
Yeah, okay.
I send mine.
Yeah, I just, I haven't seen them listed. Maybe because Karen was going away that we haven't. I just haven't seen them in a little bit. Okay, so subcommittee liaison reports.
Budget.
What? Budget's first, yes, budget.
Okay, so you heard a lot of it. Just to explain, there's, there was some confusion, the draft, the reason there's a draft budget presentation is that the budget subcommittee was talking about how we're going to do outreach, and we're going to be trying to set up meetings with different PTOs at their meeting and come and do a presentation. This was meant to be posted to the budget.
Okay, not to this one.
It ended up here. You can look at it, but it needs to be updated, so it's not correct.
Got it.
But it'll, it'll look something like that.
Okay, okay.
And, just a second.
And we discussed the, the circuit breaker.
Yeah, we already talked about that. But the other thing that we talked about was that the warrant will close at near the end of January, and we need to have two things put on it. One is to have the creation of a new special education reserve account.
You mean, in the school district, right? Because there's this new regulation that you don't.
That's what I'm talking about. If you look up the law, it has to be approved by the town's legislation, legislative body, which I assume is town meeting. So we need to get it on the warrant so it can go through. And then we also need to have something put on the warrant so we have the money taken out of the account, or out of wherever it is right now.
Of the town special education account, yeah, okay. So is that something that we will get?
Dr. Boddy said that he would.
Dr. Boddy will be on top of it, okay.
He would work on it.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, community relations?
Next community relation subcommittee meeting will be on Monday, the 23rd, from 5:00 to 6:00 here. And I just wanted to know from Jeff and Bill how it went for your school committee chat.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Anybody talk to you?
Yes, a lot of people.
Oh, great.
No way.
You want to send that to everybody afterwards, that report? We didn't think.
Yeah, we, so Bill did a report.
Of how people came by?
And I added it, yeah. And we had about, we had several people, the table was full. Lots of people came to talk to us.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I don't know why you didn't have anybody come talk to you. I really don't understand.
It wasn't publicized.
Yeah, it advertised sufficiently, I think, in the first time.
We had a gentleman that presented, we'll send it to you, proposal to get substitutes here. And while it's an escalating pay scale, but it's, it's moderate. He's been a sub here for a long time. He talked about that.
Oh, he talked about the pay.
Yeah.
Well, people had questions about the Gibbs. There were several questions. Several parents came to us, have fourth graders who want to know what the plan is for the Gibbs. There was a question about when the high school will be done.
Yep.
You know, the previous question, when's it gonna begin? But that was the question that was asked. There were questions about, it was a tax dialogue that we had with somebody who wanted to know where the town was going in terms of the tax burden. Trying to think of, and then we had the, go ahead, I'm trying to think.
There were times when Jeff and I were.
Talking to different people.
Talking to the same person, a lot of times, separate people.
Because there's so many.
Y'all went by real fast.
It was real, yeah, we really.
That is great to hear.
It was jammed up, lots of people.
That is great to hear.
I got there a little early.
Librarians, so they, so somebody came by to lobby for librarian pay.
Certified librarians, bring them back.
Yeah, so I think it'd be helpful to get reports in every time we do this.
Well, you got it.
I got it. He edited.
Yeah, no, that's, it doesn't, the timing doesn't matter, but it'd be, it'd be really helpful. Each time we do this, we should create a short report, one page or something of what, yeah.
Just what was discussed.
What was discussed, what were those concerns, what was discussed.
I'll send it to Karen, I got it.
Great.
The sign is definitely important because I got there about a half hour early to make sure we'd have a little corner.
Yep.
I put the sign, but there were three empty seats. And I kept saying, you can sit here until 11 o'clock. And a couple of people sat, had the thing left, and one guy came and said, I haven't got enough time. But then he saw the sign, he's, he sat, and they were the first couple to talk to us.
So if you could also bring the sign.
Yeah, this is the one, staff is relying on Cindy to distribute these signs, so we have to.
I'm happy to do that, as community relations person.
Yeah, yeah.
It was a lot of fun. We had a lot of fun.
The next one is in February 4th, and we don't have anybody signed up for that yet.
Okay.
So, does everybody, did everybody get the link to the Google Doc?
Send it out again.
Jeff obviously did, because he signed up.
I did.
I signed Bill up.
I sent up for some, another one.
I saw you signed up for March.
Send the link out again, just to make our lives all easier.
Okay, I will do that.
That'd be great. Okay.
But it was a lot of fun, great dialogue, lots of good questions.
Good, good. So glad, so glad.
Okay, do we want to extend this time period, three minutes before?
We're gonna have to.
No, I want to hear from Cindy. The motion needs to come from Cindy.
Cindy?
All right, move to, extend the 10 o'clock rule to 10:15.
Second.
No.
Yes, I don't care.
I mean, doesn't, you don't have to end at 10:15. You can extend 10. Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No?
No.
It's passed. It's passed. Let's go.
Mr. Slifman, who had many times that went after 10.
It's his call.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so next is district accountability curriculum instruction assessment.
We have to meet. Remember that? That's the issue. Yeah.
Yeah, we have to meet. Is everybody available Wednesday?
Why don't we talk about it offline?
We'll talk about it at the end of the meeting.
Talk about it offline, yeah.
Okay. Facilities, Mr. Thillman.
The school enrollment task force met, there was a good report on it. We're building the Hardy.
We're building it.
So basically, I mean, at this point, school enrollment task force and facilities are.
Same thing.
Same thing.
And there's no real, and last year, we had a need to meet in advance because there were some more strategic challenges. And I don't think, the committee hasn't felt the need to do it this year.
Are you guys continuing to meet? Or is there, are the school enrollment task force continuing to meet?
There's a meeting coming. They haven't set the date yet because they're just waiting for information on the actual pricing.
Might have set a date. Okay, I can't remember.
I thought we set a date before we left.
I think we did.
Did we?
Yeah, we did. I can't, I don't know when the next one is.
Let me see if I can find it.
Okay. Can you send me that?
Yes.
Great, okay.
Okay.
It's February 8th.
February 8th.
Wednesday, February 8th at 6 o'clock.
Correct, right here in this room.
In this room.
Okay, 6 o'clock in this room. Okay.
Policies?
Yes, policies.
Begin off, I sent you folks copies. I asked Mike Gilbert to communicate with members that he's currently working with and have, has worked with on doing their policy books, and asked them to please send us the good, the bad, and the ugly of their experiences. He sent me a copy of the email. I should have sent that to you, I'm sorry. Only got two responses. And I sent those two responses to you folks.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Do you want, should those be in the minute and the responses?
I, I.
They should be in correspondence.
They should be in correspondence, I think.
They may be.
Oh, maybe they are already in there, okay.
They got, only got sent yesterday.
I don't think they are, so that would be.
I don't think they are.
Let's send a note to Karen.
They will definitely be in the correspondence the next time.
That they'll.
Right.
Okay.
How much is it that it costs?
$10,000.
Over three years.
Over three years.
Over three years.
Oh, you pay it over three years.
And that gets you what?
A new policy book, updated with legal opinion, legal approvals.
And there's no, like, ours is already in good shape, so it's only half that?
No, no.
Because, I mean, we're diligent about keeping ours.
Yeah, we're not as much of a mess as some of the other districts are.
I mean, the ones that you got letters from, I can see paying $10,000, but.
Okay, Dr. Ashan?
We asked that.
That was one of the questions we asked, yes.
All right, so do we have to make a decision tonight? Or do, does that make sense to make a decision tonight? Or?
Well, for the, for my, for my feelings, I would like to have it done so we can start doing the contract, having the contract signed and setting up dates. And we can give our priorities of which policies we want to look at first and going through the whole book.
Okay.
It's, but I mean, if folks want to put it off, we have a meeting this, the other part I was gonna say, our next meeting will be on January 19th in this room at 5:30. We we will be discussing student activity fee policy, that and, and MASC schedule if we approve it.
Okay.
So I'm gonna, is it appro-
Yeah, put a motion on, and we'll discuss it.
Move to contract with Massachusetts Association of School Committees to review and revive and update our current policy book.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. Hayner, seconded by Mr. Sillman. Okay, discussion on the moment.
I would also note that as a result of this, they will end up posting our policy manual on their site.
Right, for the, for a period of time, well, within that, but there's a period of time for that, three years, and then we'd have to pay an additional amount for-
After that.
-future posting, is why I'm just saying.
Oh.
Right, so, but they'll post it for those period, that period of time, and then, but they-
I, I would like to say that's a choice, because in one of those emails, they made a choice not to.
Yeah.
But we don't get the chance.
It's a choice thing. You don't get any money back for that.
Miss Stark.
So I, so the $10,000 gets us, they're going to do anything and everything we want with our policy manual. Then what do we do go moving forward?
You mean-
Is the expectation that every, so often you hire them and clean everything up?
I don't have access to it right now, but I think it's also part of the thing, they will provide us with necessary changes and updates to what they've already done on, as it comes through from the state and the federals and stuff like that, which they, they, I think they do sometimes.
They do that anyway.
They're doing that right now.
Well, they send us how we should change it.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, it, my opinion, that's a cut and paste at that point, from currently, we've already updated it. The biggest thing that I see, we're doing this and we're not the pros right now, and part of the thing is turning around, and they're gonna do it in conjunction with us. So if we, we're having the comptroller coming on, on the 19th to discuss the student activity, when that policy would come up, we'd automatically invite our people to come in and ask the questions as well. But it also provides us the legal that we no longer have to pay, legal opinion of what we-
It could save us money and legal expenses.
When we come up with the final product that we want, we normally send it to legal for approval on most of the policies, because sometimes, especially if, if we've tweaked them in such a way we're worried about them, they have legal counsel to support their document, or what we come up with as well. We're not stuck, they're not gonna come in and just give us a cut.
No, I know, it's just in, in our, in our very tight financial situation, it's just really, really hard to want to spend $10,000 on making our policies clean, that's all. I mean, if I had to say something that was a nice to have, it's a nice to have, it's not a gotta have.
I would say, I think, I, I would venture to guess we're gonna spend more on legal than $10,000 over a three-year period on our policies.
Really?
Dr. Alzheim?
If we could catch even one thing, like what happened with the privacy problem that led to our legal, our massive legal issues that are now, thankfully, in the past.
In this.
That would be worth-
Well paid.
A lot of money.
Okay.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Move the question.
What? Okay, so, yeah, okay. So all those in favor of this motion, which is spend $10,000 over three years to ask MSBA to update our policies?
To engage in a contract with them, okay.
To engage in a contract with them.
MASC.
All signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm gonna oppose it.
Okay, opposed by service extensions?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so it's not unanimous.
Having a hard time with the money right now.
Service, yes. Okay. Next thing.
School enrollment. Oh, we did it, warrant, everybody got paid.
Warrant committee, our liaison reports.
No, we have one more thing.
Legal contract.
I, I wasn't in the, the thing, are we a subcommittee or a subcommittee on stolen charges?
Yeah, it's a subcommittee.
Oh, right.
So the legal services.
We should add that too.
Do you want to postpone it until the next meeting, and you give them, or do you want to discuss it now?
I can discuss it now, it's pretty simple, I think. So the, it's in Novus, I asked Karen to send it out, but I don't think, I'm not getting her emails, did she email it to you?
It's in the, it's in Novus.
It's one, it is our recommendation that they-
Anyways, so we're already operating under the agreement as revised, so obviously we're gonna continue for the, for the current year. But before we actually sign off on a three-year agreement, there's still some more work we need to do. We need to, we want to find out, you know, make sure that our expenses are in line with other towns, and there's a discrepancy in what they said the agreement, what they, what they said the prior agreement was in their new letter, and what their old letter said the prior agreement was, is different. So unless that changed along the way.
I think, I remember that it changed somewhere along the way. I don't remember which year, and I can't think of what search terms to look for it.
So what, what, what does that, how high is our retainer at this point, $60,000 or $70,000?
I think it is the 70.
Because the new letter-
Well, that's, that, we'll verify that and come back to you.
Okay.
So we will come back.
So we should have these letters someplace.
So I, I guess we probably should have a motion to can, to operate under the agreement for the rest of the year, because it technically is an agreement between the school committee and the law firm. So-
Do we need that motion, in that, I mean, that's a default position?
We have not authorized the-
They've changed the terms.
The changes in the terms that they operate under right now, so we need a mo, we do need a motion.
Okay, okay, so-
So I move that we approve-
Motion by Mr. Carden?
We approve operating under that agreement through the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Hayner. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And so you guys are gonna continue to meet to discuss the future contract?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Excellent.
Okay, any liaison reports? Yes, Mr. Hayner?
I presented our budget process to the PTO at Dallin the other night, and attempted to answer questions and gave them, gave them link, email links to get more information and to contact the budget subcommittee. I want to thank Dr. Alzheim for providing me the additional information. Very good. And I also met with, regular meeting with the permanent town building committee, but Dr. Boddy covered everything that dealt with us relating to the schools. Thank you.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Future agenda items, Mr. Hayner?
I would like to have an item for executive session to discuss the CFO salary.
Okay.
Going forward.
That, that's appropriate, I assume?
Yes, and occurring for negotiations, I think is very appropriate, we do that.
Okay. Okay, so I have made a decision to not do executive session tonight, because it's only to approve the minutes.
Okay.
And I think we should not go into executive session just to approve minutes, we should push that.
Okay.
And, and we will prove the minutes, you know, when we go into executive session for some other reason. So, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Thillman, seconded by Ms. Starks. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
I have 37 minutes.
See?
Return.